I hate to try to spur everybody, but we need to spur ourselves a little bit. We're three minutes behind. So just before everybody comes up, and I might say that also because some of the offices are not here yet, I don't know if I see the recorder yet, but we're in this, we had to come into this office just because of our 10th floor office, or our 10th floor auditorium, I guess, was having some technical difficulties with the microphones. So please, unfortunately, I, it's greater, it's nicer to us, I think, to have a little bit more intimate setting, especially for your slides, so we can take a look at them, but we're just going to have to go, go with this one. So no, no bang on you guys, but let's see, the exit door to run is maybe a little bit closer at this place. So first off, I'm going to bring up item number one is a presentation regarding the FY 2021 budget, Maricopa County Clerk of the Court. So I would like to ask our Clerk of the Court, Mr. Jeff Fine, to come up, and I believe Nancy Rodriguez, the Deputy Director as well, welcome. So take us, take us through the budget.
Is that necessary? All right, very good. Wasn't sure if I needed to push the button or not. Mr. Chair and Board Members, it is both, I'm both pleased and honored to be here today to present our proposed budget and some of the highlights of our initiatives associated with our budget for the coming fiscal year. Thank you for having us. I actually planned on a short version and a long version, and a long version is still very short, but I was thinking of starting off with, I'm not asking for anything, are there any questions? But I guess we'll, but I'll kind of go into, into maybe the 10-minute version. You'll notice that before you, I believe, has been distributed a document. It represents the presentation of our budget and a summary of some of the things I'll be presenting to you today. And I believe it's also up on the screens as well for those who may be watching in the audience or from home. Mr. Chair, this truly has been a year of focus on initiatives for the Clerk's Office, things that promote efficiency, increase access to services, and ultimately increase access to justice. I'll never forget, when I first came on board, I had a few individuals ask me, and I was, I was elected just a little over a year ago, took office about this time last year, and had a few individuals ask me, well, what are you going to do? And I said, that's kind of a scary question, because there are so many stakeholders in the services that we provide. And with an amazing team that I'm blessed to have with me here today in the front row, and Nancy is one of our senior-appointed officials, we embarked on a very robust strategic agenda development process. And I don't know that the office has ever reached out to stakeholders quite as boldly as we did last year. We reached out to literally tens of thousands of stakeholders, court customers, to the, to the court itself, every employee in the court, in probation, county attorney's office, public defender's office, via email distribution through those particular agencies, and many others. We, again, we estimate it was in the tens of thousands of people that we reached. And we asked them, and we, we used a very open-ended survey, where we said, is there something that we can do to be more helpful to you and your interaction with the Clerk of the Court and the Court's Office? And we, we received about 500 and 500 or so responses back, and then we actually assembled everybody supervisor and up in the Clerk's Office, poured through that information, further engaged in brainstorming, and, and actually came up with a list and started to prioritize about 50 to 60 initiatives that we felt, some were small and some were large. But that was, that was a better portion of the, of the first part of the year for us. Before we, before I, I looked at what it is that I, I feel maybe we should be aiming at, we first reached out boldly. And I will, I would also like to note that, you know, in addition to serving the public, there are a number of things that we do to serve the court. And we were, we were very robust in how we approached that. We have a superb relationship with the court, I feel. And to follow up on the feedback that we received from judges and staff members as well, I and my team members routinely have meetings with, with our court peers. As a matter of fact, one of the things I'm very proud, I believe that, that is the culture of our leadership team, we don't wait for an issue to come up to have a meeting with, with, with other stakeholders. We'll meet even if there's nothing to discuss, because we need to foster relationships so that when something does need to be addressed, we're able to pick up the phone, and the trust is already there. And so I just want to, to let you know, that is the culture of the, of the Clerk's Office and of the court. And I know in years past, although I wasn't with the Clerk's Office then, that in years past, maybe there were some times where, where things were a little bit abrasive between the agencies. That does not exist today. That is gone. And so I just wanted to share that with you. In our first section, we talk about, these are, these are some of the things we've been focusing on, that are kind of indicative of, and summarize the nature of our strategic agenda, improving access to services through leveraging of technology and embracing innovation. A lot of our initiatives relate to innovative strategies, smart initiatives, things that are being utilized in other sectors, other sectors of government, as well as the private sector, as, and many of them rely on the leveraging of technology. It's amazing, there's never been a time where I've seen where, you know, technologies integrate as much as they do now. It's interesting, in years past, and I've been in government now for about 30 years, where you would talk about technologies, but you were talking about technology silos. That is not the case. I was just in a meeting yesterday where we were talking about some technology in the various criminal justice agencies in Maricopa County, and, and the discussion focused heavily on integrating them, them communicating and sharing information and talking with one another. And so, so much of our work kind of circles around that. Ultimately, our vision and plans are aimed at increasing our capacity to serve and be more helpful to all customers. And I want to emphasize "all," because even, even something as simple as our, our, how it is that people can reach out to us, we are the face of the court in many ways. There, we have customer service counters, we have the ability to engage with us through e-filing online. So I, I do tell my folks, I say, we're kind of the face of the, of the judicial branch in many ways, because people come to our counters to ask questions and to drop things off, and, and to file their paperwork, and, and make their payments and such. But it's interesting, it, there are traditional means by which people engage, engage with, with the Clerk's Office, engage with government, over counters and by phone. My, my team has come to me, and we're, we're working on something called a chatbot. And through the use of AI and working with IBM, we're able to take trusted sources of information, and people can ask this chatbot questions. Now, this is not a technology that I'm, I've really used much, ever, in my life, but I, I know, and I think, I think that you know, and I heard, when, when Supervisor Gates was the chairman, talked about the generations that are coming, they're doing things different than us, you know? They, they do things on their phones and their, and their computers and their tablets that, that some people still may not be comfortable with. We want, we want-
I'm explaining to my teenager every day right now.
We want to have a channel that everybody, for everyone, for those that want to call, let's prominently place our phone number on our website. For those that want to email us, they want to think about what they want to say and put it down, let's make sure our email address is on there. If people want to text us, that's another, that's another channel. It's not, that's, that's, in, in many sectors of society, companies use that function, you know? Why, why not in government? There's more at stake in the court system than there is purchasing some item from a company. Why not take advantage of something that, that somebody may be comfortable with, the newer generations may be comfortable with? So we're breaking some new ground in that area. I, I, I think, to some extent, in the history of government, we've practiced a little bit of what I call practical obscurity. You kind of have to hunt down through a couple of screens to find a phone number, or to find a way to contact somebody. They want you to, to, to look at the information first that's available, and make it a little bit harder to find a way. That's, that's not our culture. We're going to put front and center on, on our documentation, on our technology, on our website, on our social media, give people the ability to contact us in a manner in which they're comfortable. So, and, and that's important, because the court system is complex, it's becoming more complex, the judicial, the judicial system that, that we support, and it's expensive. You know, most people cannot afford an attorney to help them navigate the system. So they navigate the system by using some of the tools that the Clerk's Office provides, as well as the law and legal library self-help center that the court provides. More and more, I think I heard a stat not that long ago, that in 80% of family court cases, a party is self-represented. Those are, those are complicated proceedings, and there's a lot at stake. It's, it's interesting, when I talk to my, I talk to new employees, and I talk with them about the importance of the work that we do, you know, much of our job is about data, documents, and money. That's really what the Clerk, it's, that would be easy to say that that's what the Clerk's Office is all about, but I tell my team, that's not what it's about. It's about people's lives. When people come to our counters in a criminal matter, they're facing, their, their liberty is at stake. When they're coming to our counters with a civil matter, their property is at stake. When they're coming to the counter in a family court case, their children are at stake. There's a lot at stake, and that's why, why, although it would be simple to, to, to think of it as data, money, and, and documents, really, it's about people. And that's where one of our, one of our, one of our core statements about what we believe is, start with people. That's why we are here, that's why we serve. So again, in Section 1, and I'll go through these now that I've kind of, I've, I've laid a foundation for this, but we aspire to, to provide services that help people navigate the court system. We just put up a new website that is much easier to navigate than our previous one. Not only that, our team members can now maintain it, as opposed to us having a technology team do that, through a company called Granicus, that works very closely with government in helping us, as a smart initiative, being able to maintain and modify that very flexibly. Virtual assistant, I mentioned that earlier, and we're doing a fair amount of social media outreach. We are expanding the use of business intelligence. We use a product, I think, called Power BI. And, and I, and I grew up in a culture in government where you would have a meeting, and somebody would bring either on a PowerPoint or would bring on paper charts, you know, bar charts and pie charts, and somebody had to go into some system and pull data out, and they would have to enter that into something, and they would create a chart, and you could see a snapshot for a month, or a quarter, or a year. That whole, it, it's amazing, my team has totally put that on its head. Rich McHattie, formerly with OET, who's been on our team now for a year, has brought in a product that allows us to lay over what could best be described as a dashboard. And, and basically, in real time, we can look at data any way we want. We could, anytime, we can open up the dashboard, and we can see what is the average wait time for a particular counter, for a particular window, for a particular building, for example. And the possibilities are endless. We can look at, we can look at turnover, staff turnover, and we can look at it, we can look at it by division, by supervisor, by the, the job title, by location, just simply by, simply by touching different tabs and manipulating some of the controls. It's amazing, it's, it's a dashboard, it is so powerful, because you don't have to have somebody constantly looking at data and creating charts. We can look at whatever we want, whenever we want, and this helps us make decisions based upon, based upon data. And it's nice that we're able to look at the end result, too, to be able to see, you know, wait times and stuff in real time, so that we can, we can be flexible with resources. Instead of on a month-to-month basis or an annual basis, where we look at, what was our wait times this year? We could look at, what were our wait times today? What were our wait times this week? What were things like at locations, in, you know, day by day? It's very exciting. And implement solutions based upon interests identified through stakeholder engagement, I talked a fair amount about engagement and collaboration earlier. We are not requesting any new operational resources. In a moment, I'll tell you about an emerging capital project, a small project that we would, we would, we'll just share with you, but it's emerging, and I don't, don't have enough information to, to let you know what any potential cost might be today, but I'll talk about that in just a moment. But our budget is developed within baseline, and our new and expanded programs, our improvement programs, our initiatives, will continue to be funded through the, the existing funding that we have, including and especially the use of grants and special revenues. There are particular revenues associated with the fees that are paid at our counters. A portion of that is used to maintain and fund improvements and maintenance of those particular programs. So we're fortunate that we have that particular source, and for what we would like to do this year, that is sufficient, despite the fact that we have a very robust plan. I just wanted to mention, too, another reason why that is possible is because we are shifting from a culture, an IT culture of development, to an IT culture of integration. And here's what I mean by that. We just rolled out our new finance system called RFR. I think I declared last year when I was here that we were through with development, we were preparing to roll it out. Took about five, six months for us to do the data conversion, and we went live this fall without a hitch, no problems at all. It's running well, and it's saving a substantial amount of time over the very antiquated systems that we were using over the years. But we are, we have this long list, and when I first look at the list of the things, online payments, off-site cash payments, you know, text messaging reminders, a lot of the, the, these chat functions that will use computer data to answer questions. Each one of these, if you look at how long it took to develop our FSR software, it was a matter, you measure that in a matter of years. But because of the technologies we're looking at using now, they're already being used. They're, they've already been developed by vendors. They're, I guess what you would say, off-the-shelf, and some, they can be customized for our use, but instead of having our teams develop the, the technology for online payments, we are just going to put that out to vendors, and then we will, we're moving to an age of where we integrate with software. Instead of developing it, we're simply looking for best practices in technology, and how it is we can adapt it to work with our systems. That allows us to do things now in months. We anticipate having things like online payments, and things like this online chat function, you know, it's, it's literally a matter of weeks or months. That's how we're measuring when it is we'll be able to roll these things out, not years, traditionally the way that it has been, when we're responsible for developing our software. So I wanted to share that with you. In Section 3, this just talks a little bit about, expands on our innovation and technology, our ability to do the online payments, the ability to do cash payments off-site is facilitated by the fact that we now have our new finance system in place. We have our new website, it says that we're going to finalize the launch, actually, we launched last week. So if you get a chance to take a look at our website, we'd love for you to take a look at that and give us some feedback. We're very proud of that, and that's something we were able to get done in, again, a matter of a few months. We are going to be looking at expanding e-filing, this is very important. We're one of the largest counties in the country, geographically, and, and for me to drive to work every day is, is quite a hike. I mean, it's to come down I-10, it takes me more than an hour. I can't imagine, if somebody has a, they're representing themselves in a case, and they have to take a half, probably have to take a half-day off of work to come down here. People don't have that type of discretion, that type of flexibility in their budget, where they can take a half-day off of work to come down here and file a form in their family court case. So in, in all, in all types of cases, we aspire to bring e-filing to all case types, so that, and I kind of joke about it, and I'll embellish a little bit, but I've said, you should be able to make a payment from your couch on your phone at 10 o'clock at night. There are systems capable of doing that, we have the ability to provide that level of service. You should be able to make a payment, and do so at 10 o'clock at night in your pajamas, you know, from your phone, instead of taking a half-day off of work to come down here just to make a $50 payment on average, that's the average-sized payment that we receive. So again, we're very excited about, about pushing out e-filing and e-initiatives to allow people to, to engage with the court system online. We're going to continue to invest in AI. I just received a briefing this morning, we're going to be holding a second round of talks with IBM. Our tech team and IBM are working together to apply artificial intelligence in the Clerk's Office. I had no idea what it was. I think there was a movie with Will Smith about AI. You know, when you hear about stuff, you know, computers learning, you, you think about taking over the world, that type of thing. I had no idea what it was. I now know what it is, and I now know its possibilities, and I, and I, and I now understand that data entry will be something that, that will be something that we won't be doing much of in the future. It's all going to be handled by, by systems.
A question, Supervisor Chukri.
Hey, Jeff, the great presentation so far, and on item number three, you were just talking about making payments from a couch and whatnot. What, so is it, is it up to speed? Are we actually engaging in this? Is it functional? Or are you saying you're bringing this technology to, to the office?
Supervisor Chukri, in terms of payments, we have, we needed a way till RFR got out, but we started working months ago on the requirements with our business analysts. We've already gone through procurement, and it's my understanding, we're actually going out to bid on these services within days or weeks. We are aware of other court systems that have implemented this, they've done it in as little as two weeks, I am told, depending on the vendor, their level of experience. It is something that, that we anticipate will happen in weeks and months. As far as online filing, expanding it, we already, we've been doing that for a decade, but it's limited to a few case types. We're on the timelines of the state, because they provide some of the technology that bridges us with those vendors, and they hold those vendor contracts. In recent discussions with the state, they're advising that nearly all case, I, it's my understanding, the majority of case types will be available for us to implement this year. We are, and, and in terms of weeks and months, we are done with, with developing the requirements for online case initiation. Although people have been able to file documents in the court system through our portals for years, a decade now, in a limited number of case types, they have not been able to initiate a case. They had to bring down their first document on paper and file it and pay their fees in person. We are going to have that addressed, and again, it's, it's my understanding, this is a matter of weeks or months. We are going to be, in the next three to four months, I think we'll be able to report to you, we've achieved a number of milestones in these areas.
I'm just surprised we haven't done it yet, I'm sure you were too. For being the size of the candidate we are, to not be able to make these payments using technology or online is remarkable to me. The, the second part of my question would be, what is the ripple effect of that? And what I mean is, how does that impact headcount? Because if you, if you look at that, we have clerks and others, and I'm not trying to take people's jobs away from them, but are, if, if more transactions are being done through electronic technology, and you can make them online, are we going to still need as many clerks taking payments and that type of thing?
That's a, that's a great question, Supervisor Chukri. Mr. Chairman and Supervisors, this is something we've looked at very closely. A couple of, a couple of things to that point. Number one, and as, as, as we all know, as you, you probably talk about it more often than I do, the county continues to grow. So by creating efficiencies, it helps us mitigate the effects of growth. In other words, by, by, the efficiencies will allow me, or whoever succeeds me someday, to come to you and say, we don't need more bodies to handle a higher caseload because, because we're, we operate more efficiently. But here's the other thing, too, there's two other areas in terms of reassigning that capacity. Number one is when you move to, in other courts, we, I, I actually talked with some, an administrator from one of the leading e-filing courts in the country, Orange County, in fact, I paid them a visit about two years ago, talked with them about this. And I said, and their, their hallways were bare, they, their, their lobbies were bare, they were 100% e-filing. And I said, what, what, what did you do with your people? The roles changed. It wasn't that they didn't need individuals, they almost required the same amount of staffing, but the roles changed. They became more a role of QC. They operated in cubicles, instead of at counters, they operated in cubicles, answered questions by phone, text or chat, email, those type of things. But they also, and they still operated at counter as well, and there will always be, Supervisor Chukri, there will always be people that will want to interact with somebody personally, that will want to come down to the court. But I would say a number of our positions in, in coming years will transition from a front-counter role to actually more of a QC role, where they will have a queue in their system, the documents will come in electronically, they will check them for accuracy, make sure they're complete, and engage in an acceptance of those documents and such. There will always be a need for, and, and as I mentioned earlier, and this is growing, the self-help population in the court system is growing. Fewer and fewer people can afford to hire an attorney to represent them. So by freeing up resources, we will be reassigning resources to be, try to be more helpful to self-represented litigants. And, and I had mentioned to the court that we would like to partner with them in that effort. As a matter of fact, coming soon, we'll be having some, starting some meetings between their self-help center and our team to talk about how it is we can, we can make a smooth transition from their counters to the, to the Clerk's Office. Without having to have documents come in on paper, we can, maybe we can find a way to where when, when the people go to the self-help center and they enter all their information, that it all flows electronically, and we save people time and money.
Jeff, I just, thank you Supervisor Chukri, and we've had some questions here, and that's our job, but I also want to make sure I run the trains on time, there's a lot of people that present.
You bet.
So you have about five more minutes to let us know what you'd like us to know.
You got it, and I'll, and I'll just go through it quick, I've covered most of it already. As far as retaining people and talent, I would just like to thank you for your support. Last year was instrumental in helping us address turnover, especially in the, the entry-level positions. We have a number, we had a number of employees that were making $12 to $13 an hour, and with minimum wage coming up, it would be very easy for individuals to make the same amount of money in their communities, instead of getting on the freeway for an hour every day. And, and some people have transportation challenges and issues to come down here and do a much more complex job, they could do something else. It was hard, it's hard to compete for talent when, 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 with the, the raise in minimum wage. So I want to let you know, I very much appreciate, we, we've only, we're just a couple of weeks out of those raises, so we don't know what the long-term effects are going to be, and in helping us reduce recidivism, not recidivism, so sorry.
Tell your clerks you said that.
My apologies.
Thanks Judge.
But yeah, go back to my judicial years. But it'll help us reduce turnover, and so, and we intend to build upon that, and I would say we have a very strong culture. It's interesting, if we, if we're able to hold on to somebody for a couple of years, I cannot believe the number of people in the Clerk's Office that have been here 15, 20, 25 years, it's absolutely amazing. What you did is you helped us address substantially the one area where we needed help, so thank you so much. I talked a little bit about the conversion of positions. We are going to see, and Supervisor Chukri, I, I don't know that, that we'll see a reduction in positions, but I don't know, we haven't, we won't probably know until we, we see the effects of some of these initiatives, but surely we will see a transition where we'll be changing position, roles from, for example, some counter positions to some things that are a little bit more in the back and QC-oriented. We remain committed to, to efforts related to continuing to improve the culture and engage our employees. We started some employee-focused, employee-centered work groups. We have some very talented people, and I think for the first time in the Clerk's Office, at least as far as I'm aware of, we're actually putting together some work groups for people to focus on some of the things that I've talked about. We were harvesting that knowledge and using it inside the organization. The last thing is this, it relates to that emerging capital project. Of, of all of our regional centers, one area where we have a few challenges is the Southeast Regional Center. The family docket, and I, you'll probably hear from the presiding judge, too, the family docket in the regional centers is becoming, is, is, is growing. And our customer service areas are kind of busting at the seams. We have two customer service areas in the Southeast Center. One does court documents, and the other does passports and marriage licenses. And what we would like to do is to more flexibly use our staff, would be to combine those two areas together, so that we can service people faster, and we can service a growing number of customers faster. That I, for those of you from the East Valley, I don't, I'm not from the East Valley, but every time I go out there, I cannot believe the number of multifamily housing going up in areas like Gilbert, and everywhere. We're going to see it across the valley. But we feel that we'll, we can mitigate the effects of that growth by combining those two areas together, moving a few walls, and, and- two areas together, moving a few walls, and creating one customer service area. It will allow us to be more flexible and serve people better. And not only that, it'll help us, help our people become more well-rounded, get to know all the areas of the office, so that when they grow with the organization and they get into positions of leadership, they have a better understanding of the big picture of what we do. So we have submitted that to facilities. We'll be working with their architect to estimate costs, but that is really the only emerging one-time project. So, Mr. Chairman, board members, thank you. That concludes my formal presentation to you. Thank you for letting me do the long version. But if I can be helpful with anything, feel free to let me know. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to entertain them at this time.
Great, thank you.
Is that a new logo, Mr., is that a new logo, the clerk of the court with?
It's the same logo.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yes.
Sorry I didn't pay attention better last time.
Okay, thank you, Judge.
Thank you so much.
Old habits are hard to break. So nice seeing you guys, thank you very much.
And thank you for all that you do. We are very appreciative of your support. You help us, you help us achieve our mission and help us serve others. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, next up, I get to call a judge up to space me. This is awesome. This is an awesome part of my job. Judge Walty and Ray Billit, thank you guys for coming today for our budget presentation. Have at it. Nice to see you.
Good afternoon. And thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, for providing me with the next 30 minutes to discuss the, what I believe are the judicial branch's needs going forward into FY 2021. I've been in this job since the end of August. This is my first budget presentation before you. And I think the first thing I have to tell you, because I know you've all seen the PowerPoint before you, is that I am not naive. I understand that my request is extensive. I consider myself and my leadership of the branch to be fiscally conservative. I intend to oversee the branch using business principles and sound business practices. I wish that the first year I was before you, I was asking for nothing. And that in the third year, when I asked for something more extensive, you might say, well, we've come to know him as fiscally conservative, and in the third year, he must really need it. That's not the position, unfortunately, that I am in, because I do believe we have some significant needs, and I will walk through those with you.
So Judge, let me, being that you brought that up, it is a significant ask. And our board, it's, we keep making jokes of people walking in and saying, we're staying in our baseline and like hit the door. That sounds great to us, a fiscally conservative board. By coming up with such a large amount of asks, do you feel that this division was underfunded over the last series of years? I know there's some construction projects, those are going to come up, but, you know, Ray, you've been at these things quite often, too, and we have invested in the human capital of this county. So maybe you can further set the scene for us a little bit, because this is very large.
Well, if you take the, if you take the capital away, two of the significant asks are essentially corrections. I know that we were before you last year discussing electronic recording. I know that we had initial estimates with respect to electronic recording, that you found for the reasons we articulated last year that electronic recording was important to us, was a necessary function, we had an outdated system, and we were in the process of replacing it. The RFPs had not gone out, and we asked based upon estimates, good faith estimates. The estimates were woefully inadequate at the end of the day, and when the RFP process was done, the bidding process was done. We're asking you for $17 million more than you gave us to do a three-year project. There's not much I can do about that. Do I think we were underfunded? No. Do I think we came in with a poor estimate? We did. So I wouldn't characterize that as underfunding. We have another example where you absolutely agreed with us last year that we needed $1.5 million to replace the video surveillance cameras at the Durango detention facility, something core to what we do and core is necessary. I think we got those estimates from FMD, and they were based upon some older equipment, and as we began to execute that project this year, it determined that we're, that's going to cost $2.5 million. So there's an additional $1 million on top of that. Were we underfunded? No. Did the project end up costing us, or will cost us more for what is a core and necessary function, just like FTR? Yes. So, no, I don't think I can tell you that I think you've consistently underfunded us. In fact, I believe that you understand the importance of the judicial branch to this county. That is a core function of this county, that is a necessary service and requirement to this county. So I would not characterize, in my 13 years as the court, feeling as though the county had ever underfunded us. But that's separate and apart from what I believe we need going forward.
Okay.
And I was present at the passing of the gavel, and you suggested at that time at the passing of the gavel, we cannot be all things to all people, and we need to look at their mandates. I can tell you, and anybody who works with me at the court knows, that I tend to focus on core function, and that we have core obligations as a court that we have to do. Could we do all sorts of additional things in addition to court services? We could. We have an audience for that, and we have people hurting who we have the potential to make lives better. And I'm not suggesting that wouldn't be appropriate, it's just not our core function. And so I like to think that while the ask is big, that it is focused principally on what I believe are the core functions of the court. And I'm not going to be here for more than 30 minutes, because I've told Mr. Billit that at 30 minutes, if you don't throw me out, he will. So to be clear, our capital, our capital project is different, and I think you recognize that from the general ask. You all know, because you have generously granted our request for the renovation of the Central Court Building, which was vastly overdue, that was simply an inadequate facility, continues to be a less-than-adequate facility as we go forward. We are redoing two floors at a time on a substantial remodel. Gut the floor, redesign traffic patterns, so that we have a secure inmate traffic pattern, a secure court staff traffic pattern, and a secure public traffic pattern. The 13 and 12 have been gutted to be rebuilt. We are doing two at a time at your and FMD's request, because the nature of the construction allows it to be more cost-effective to do two floors at a time. That causes us to be eight courtrooms down from our stock of courtrooms. We are at maximum capacity. I have as many judicial officers as I have courtrooms to put them in, with no flexibility whatsoever. If I have water damage in a courtroom, I don't know where that court is going to go right now. The issue with that for us is, if it was a one-year problem, we would hold tight. But that building won't be done for nine years, and we will be eight down for nine years, which puts us at zero potential growth over the course of the next nine years. We are proposing stopping the funding to remodel the 11th floor and pursue building out the tower, which will allow us, the additional courtrooms, to shift courtrooms from the old courthouse, where we presently have 14 judicial officers holding court. And quite honestly, three of the courtrooms in that building should not be used by Superior Court officers. They are used in this emergency because we have nowhere else to put them. The other 11 of those courts are not safe traffic pattern courts. In every single one of our courtrooms, both the regional courtrooms and the remaining downtown courtrooms, we have secure corridors for judges. We have juvenile courts and family courts in the old courthouse now that do not have safe pathways for court and court staff. We have not had an incident, and we're very fortunate. But that is not a building, at long term, we should continue to have judicial officers practicing for the safety of those judicial officers and for the safety of their staff. If we built out what was always planned for a build-out in the South Court Tower at this time, we would have the ability to shift those resources. We would also have a huge advantage moving forward, because if we stopped our remodeling of the Central Court Building and shifted resources to build out the tower, it would allow us far greater flexibility and economy in redesigning the remaining cosmetic remodeling of the Central Court Building. Because if you utilize the South Court Tower, which is a jail within a courthouse, for the 14 courtrooms you can build out in the South Court Tower, it allows you to remodel the Central Court Building in a way that does not require very expensive holding areas and prisoner patterns within the Central Court Building. It also gives us enormous flexibility to do what is, and Mr. Fine just made reference to this, we have ever-growing needs in family court in the regions. We are constantly shifting zip codes in family court, so that we have family court practitioners having to come downtown rather than to an appropriate region around the valley for them to go to court. And we have to do that due to the nature of the courtrooms we have. We have consolidated hearing rooms without jury boxes downtown. And so I can't shift civil resources or other resources from the regions and shift family courts out to the regions. Greater flexibility in the remodel of the Central Court Building and the utilization of those courtrooms would allow me to shift civil divisions from the regions and shift family divisions out to the regions to better serve the public in those regions.
Judge, let me ask you this, because I do want to, I do want to hold tight as much as I can to the 30-minute rule. You're talking about a change in strategy from what we heard from prior years to this, and it is, it's a massive change in strategy. Because we thought we were, I think, we thought we were going in a right way, slowly but surely. I know, oh, crime rate is falling, how come we didn't hear this, you know? But we've been building, it seems like I have, I, Steve, have been building courtrooms year after year after year, and I know the population's getting larger. Maybe we need to come up with a strategy session, because what I want to ask is, I think about those submariners right here. This is so ridiculous, but hot bunking a facility that when someone's on duty, someone's not, but the structure stays the same. So I'm kind of leaning towards, well, why do you not, we do not look at night court or a strategy of figuring out how to best utilize facilities? Maybe that creates a massive dramatic effect with securing of officers and securing the people. And I know that there's a lot of people that talk about, well, everyone's working in these hours that court's on, and then maybe they won't miss key important hearings if they could come after work, but the courts aren't working. So my question to you is, with this amount of spend, do you think it might be worthwhile to just hold still on your ask and put it for, in a couple of weeks from now, so you can address our board again, to talk about this strategy? Because, Bill, you're a part of this industry. I, I'm a little bit, you know, I don't want to go shake, nod our hands, and then have a really tough discussion with you, and my thing, saying, this is, you know, a massive spend, and I've got to get my colleagues around it. You guys need to hear all of this information, too. And I don't know if 30 minutes gives you enough time to really flesh this out for us. I don't know, that's my thought. I don't know about if my board wants to.
Mr. Chair, I think that's a good suggestion. This is, I think Judge Walty's making a lot of great points as it relates to continued growth, and I hadn't thought through sort of the issues that we are creating with doing this two floors at a time. But it's a significant course correction, and like just looking at this, so is this suggesting, and I don't mean to chew up time here, but just looking at this, so you're suggesting doing two courtrooms on eight and then building out nine, 10, 11, and 14? Is this all in one, in FY 21?
No.
Okay. See, so that, I mean, it's just, yeah.
No, no. It, this is, this is beginning the process of rolling the rock. And really, and look, I absolutely understand. We're here to make proposals, and you are there to weigh and balance a lot of demands upon a limited amount of resources. And I appreciate that, understand that. And it may well be that I'm here talking about this so that you're not surprised when I talk about it next year. But I do have to, whether we do some of this, or none of it, or all of it, the reality is, we can't grow a moment, and we can't wave a wand and create a space. And I haven't grown since 2014, and the idea that I won't grow for another nine years is at least unrealistic.
Yeah. And we also, on these, some of these capital projects, we also have to have in mind our expenditure authority. We don't go out and bond, how we, you know, how we fit this into successive years' budgets, so we're not paying a whole bunch of interest rate payments, so.
I am happy to come back at any time and for any amount of time and discuss this.
Supervisor Chukri.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Judge Walty, always good to see you.
Nice to see you.
It's better to see you here than in a courtroom. You know what's fascinating?
I get that a lot.
I bet you do. I bet you do. By the way, for the record, his brother taught me at Brophy in physics, his very first year teaching. And he's still teaching today.
And you've left an impression.
Yeah, quite an impression, I'm sure.
Well, the sun's coming up, so.
In 2012, I campaigned for this office, and my opponent at the time was stating that there was this Taj Mahal of a new court building, and that had just given birth, and it had all these excess floors and excess capacity and so on and so forth. And then, having been elected to the office and touring it, you know, there wasn't much access, right? And what I think would be helpful, and you're both very well-respected by us and others here in Maricopa County, what I think would be wise, Mr. Chairman, and I think you touched on it, is to have a meeting, but also to have the right people in the meeting. I don't know if you've spoken to Reed Spalding. We took one-time Arizona Republic building in the East Valley, and someone said it was going to be $3 million to rehabilitate it. We got it down to $689,000 and haven't heard a complaint in eight years. We took a one-time jail, and now it's office space for the county attorney. So we are able to do some pretty amazing things as a county. And when I walked into a judge's chambers three years ago in the Central Court Tower, and there was duct tape around the window because rain would come in, that was offensive to me, and it was embarrassing. And as I have mentioned to my staff and my constituents, that as being the fastest-growing county for the third consecutive year, with opportunity comes responsibility, and this is our responsibility. That being said, we have to do it the right way. And I think we have to make sure that Reed Spalding's involved and that all the resources are involved, because there are economies of scale we can certainly employ. So what I would like to see, Mr. Chairman, is if we can have on one track from the judge, what this whole capital expenditure would look like, and the eight, being down eight rooms could be catastrophic, is what it sounds like to me, and so how do we, how do we build around that? And then on track two, okay, what about his operating budget? Because I'm a little confused between the two, and I still haven't gone through this, but I just, I think it might be worth separating those out. I'm willing to have, I'm open to having an informal, touching just on this very thing, because I think it is going to become more and more important to us, but we have to have the right people sitting around the table.
I agree.
Yeah, and again, I, the same thing, this is extremely important to the county, and this is outward-facing when it comes to public safety and community safety at large. And I just want to make sure that you understand that I think this is worth more than 30 minutes. I mean, everybody's worth more than 30 minutes, but this one was such a large ask, I just want to see where it's coming from, because it'll help us make, I think, a better decision this year and in years, we're here or not, but it's good to know the strategy.
We completely agree. And if you'd have given me more than 30 to start, I'd have taken it. But obviously, I would have been remiss had I not raised it. But obviously, I would have been remiss had I not raised it. And so that's why it's, I agree with you, it takes more time than it takes, but understand, I can't go through this process without bringing it up.
Okay. So let's, we've got a few more minutes. What else would you like us to know?
Let me talk about adult probation staffing. And I'll explain what I can explain with the rest of the PowerPoint, but I do want to talk about this. We are, you've seen this for many years. Do you understand the ratios that we are required? Do you understand the metric that we use in estimating what our needs are going to be? And I think we've demonstrated that we're pretty accurate about that. We're really asking for money to be set aside. We're not asking to be funded immediately. If our predictions end up true, we're asking that the funds be released for the hiring of the officers. We have 19 officers that were set aside for this year, and we're going to be making a future request that those funds be released for those hires. And that would decrease the requests that we have going forward in '21. I've been in judicial leadership for seven years. I was the criminal presiding judge for three of those years. I understand the concern about these. And that the concern is not necessarily that there's 51 minus the 19. The concern is, and it's a correct concern, and that is, where does this stop? I mean, you know, we keep making the same substantial addition to probation every year because the caseloads keep going up every year. And I absolutely understand county management's concern and your concerns about, is this sort of endless? And I think we have a couple of structural strategies to look at. And the first is that Chief Semino and his people are working very hard on innovating to decrease this necessity. But the caseload ratios are what are, they are required by law. And if we have bodies of intensive probation and bodies of standard probation, we need the ratios we need. That's a mandate. How much of that we can shift by working cooperatively with the county attorney and public defense to free up more ability to do probation based upon risk assessment rather than by stipulations and pleas? We have too many people, in my opinion, on standard probation based upon stipulated plea agreements when, in fact, if we could work out arrangements where you're on the type of probation that the risk assessment suggests you're on, then we are doing public safety, and we are doing appropriate recidivism, and we're doing it fiscally responsible. Because you all know, those unsupervised probation ratios are 1 to 500. And standard is 1 to 60. Whatever we got on standard, we need the bodies for supervision. Whatever we got on IPS, we need the bodies for supervision. But there's two other major structural approaches that I think we have to take. You all are well-educated on what a probation tail is. And let's be honest, a probation tail isn't probation. It's post-prison monitoring. It's community supervision. It is the responsibility of the Department of Corrections. It just is. And I don't want to interrupt you.
No, no, no. Go ahead.
The responsibility to the Department of Corrections. And the fact of the matter is, we're doing it because we can do it for a longer period of time and because we can do it better and because we have better recidivism rates. Now, that's all great, but it still doesn't make it our responsibility. And so we need to work with our justice partners on whether people go on probation tails first. Secondly, we need to work with policymakers in the executive branch and the legislative branch at the state to talk about what it is that needs to be done to community supervision at the state level, at DOC, so that it becomes as effective as we are. And that's really talking about the length of that term. If you don't know, community supervision is 1/7 of your prison sentence. In the federal system, it's three years or five years, depending upon the nature of the offense. And we need to talk about whether we can get our state leaders to talk about a term of community supervision that is a defined three- or five-year term. So that county attorneys around the state are not tempted to put people on probation tails because of their length. We can fix this. If we can't fix it, the other thing we need to be doing is, we need to be getting the county's funding money from the state for doing post-prison monitoring because that's what we're doing. And as long as we've been doing probation tails, we've not gotten a dime from the state on the money that's allocated to the Department of Corrections.
So that, I am glad you succinctly put that out there in the open and for all of us to see. Because for the last, since I've been appointed to this board, I have tried over and over again about abating or eliminating cost shifts. And this one is an absolute huge one. I am familiar with the DOC. I'm familiar with the parole system. I'm familiar with inmate work programs. And I remember asking our former county attorney, and it just always, well, we're going to keep trying to work there. Hopefully, our new county attorney is exposed to this as well. And I'm hoping that you talk to her about this as well. Because this is one of those cost shifts that's really hard to point up on a screen. But we have been paying for it. And the great thing is, is because the state needs to say, God, the county does such a good job, we're having them be in probation instead of parole, but we're, the county taxpayers paying for it. So thank you for, it makes it to where we can afford capital projects if we can keep our money.
Well, I only, I mean, unfortunately, there isn't anyone at this table or at that table who can just solve this problem. But I raise these issues and these structural issues because I understand the fatigue that is associated with this ever-growing population. And I think we need to get away from simply funding and growing and funding and growing. And I want you to understand that we see options around that and are pursuing those options. Unfortunately, until we get other people to do the things other people need to do, our ratios are our ratios and our costs are our costs. So that's where we're back to the positions that we believe we need. So I talked about our electronic court recording. You understand why that ask is that ask. Again, I would refer you back to the good justifications that were made to you last year by Judge Barton. We need that system. We do. We have two alternatives for the funding of that system. And one is to pay for it over the course of three years and to replace it in those three-year increments. The problem with that is that the useful life of this, like so many other electronic devices, is about eight years. And the county has been very good about their desktop replacement program. And we want to create an option also that allows us to essentially operationalize our electronic court recording. Because it's a huge ask for the next three years. And in eight years, whoever wears my robe is going to be asking for it again with $37 million plus whatever extra that's going to cost, you know, nine to 10 years from now. If we operationalize it, it brings it to about a $4.6 million ask operationalized, but then it's maintained every year.
Mr. Chair.
Phil.
Just a question on that. So Judge Walty, these numbers, you have them both Option 1 and Option 2. Those assume they carry forward 3.83 million?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes. So we're happy to discuss with staff and with you, as we move along, the options in that regard. We don't have a strong preference one way or the other. We just, we certainly want you to understand, it's got its useful life. And we don't want to make a representation as we sit here for the benefit of whoever takes my place, that once we spend this money, we don't have to spend any more. It obviously is a necessary system. And I think we've, while we still rely upon court reporters heavily, while court reporters are still the gold standard, we're running out of court reporters. And court reporter vacancies statewide are huge. We save roughly $41 million over the course of 10 years by using electronic record that we do in the places we do where we are not otherwise mandated to use court reporters. So it does save us a substantial amount of money. We are a court of record. We do not have an option but to make a record. In information technology, very, oh, very quickly, in information technology, the vast majority of this is something you're very familiar with. Things run out of their useful life. And we have a number of things that simply need to be replaced that are on eight- and 10-year useful cycles. And if you look at our request in that regard, it is largely that. We've got a handful of small personnel issues in IT that have to do with staffing, help desks. We are very reliant upon technology. That makes us more productive. It makes us more efficient. Unfortunately, it also makes us reliant upon technology. And we are so reliant that if our judicial officers or principal staff members can't do what they need to do with technology, they can't do their jobs. And we're finding that our help desk wait times are simply not satisfactory with respect to getting the job done. And we're asking for a little bit more personnel on that and some quality assurance people and some technology security people, which is something that's become a concern as we've moved along. Very quickly, you'll see two numbers for consultants. The first is, as you well know, we are in the process of creating a new case management system for adult probation. Once this is developed, it's going to provide us with greater mobility for probation officers to manage from the field. Some of the innovative ideas you're talking about, keeping them from having to be dependent upon a desk and a space and a physical plant, will ultimately save money down the road. This is really for a consultant to help us with the RFP process and the initial design processes. We utilize the same number that was derived from the consultant process when the sheriff's office did a similar thing. We're also asking for some funding for consultants in data analysis. And let me just quickly say this. We have to work smarter. And as any business, we recognize that the way to work smarter is to analyze our data and draw conclusions from our data as to how we can manage our cases better. We have enormous amounts of data for family court cases. And if we bring in a data consultant and do basically a big data project to look at, how did we deal with our high conflict cases over the course of the last 20 years? And let's figure out early in a case how we can identify high conflict cases and apply case principles for high conflict cases, then we will expedite how quickly that case moves through the system, and we will minimize the number of court hearings we have after the fact. Any other business would do this. Let's look at our data and make better decisions about how we move forward with our data. And this is simply so that we can work smarter in both our civil divisions and our family divisions and really innovate with respect to case management. So that's what that number is about. I touched upon the fact that we still need the cameras for the detention center in juvenile, and we need an extra $1 million for that. Finally, also in the category of, we've had it for a long time, it's electronic and its useful life is running out, have a lot to do with our metal detectors in court security and our x-ray machines in court security. And you'll see that we need to begin the process of replacing those. Some of those are beginning to fail. And we want to start to do that in a useful life cycle. And so there's an amount of money there. We also are partnering with the sheriff's office on their communications center, and our portion of that, I think, is $300,000. And we need to be able to pay that portion as a partner in that project. Lastly, I will leave the, well, no, I won't. I'll indulge you for just a moment. Because I think I have to say it. Our probate department, we had issues, very public issues, in 2010 with the monitoring of financial expenditures in probate cases. We are seeing an ever-increasing volume of those matters. And we need an additional investigator to be able to review those matters so we don't find ourselves in the same place we were in 2010. And this is really where money is being spent by guardians and estates, and it's spent in a responsible manner. And we have an obligation to make sure it is spent in a responsible manner. We have an oversight function there, and we simply don't have the personnel to adequately review those. And that's part of what this request is. And the second is sort of one of those, I hope, easy things. And that is that we are also responsible to visit guardian wards. Thank you. And we have an opportunity to partner with some of the local universities who will provide us hundreds of volunteers to assist us in this visitation process. All we're asking for is personnel to coordinate the volunteers. And that really is one of those, that if we invest in a single person, we get 360. And so we ask you to assist us in that regard. I will finish the same way Mr. Fine did by saying, thank you so much for the pay adjustments for the pay of our lower-scale employees in December. That is vastly important to us to both maintain those good quality folks and to attract additional folks. And I want to thank you so much for recognizing and for quickly addressing that need. And especially since it was, our security people were initially not within that. And we thank you so much for recognizing that need and for including our security people within that. So if there are any questions?
Well, Judge, I just, I'm sorry for taking you off your game. You know, but thank you. I'm going to also make sure that we get you some more time in front of the board at some point here in the very near future, just to discuss a little bit more on that strategy thing. Because it does come with, maybe not an ask this year, but probably in your term as we start rolling towards something. And I just want to learn a little bit more about it. So, thank you very much for being here.
I appreciate it. And I'm glad to meet again, anytime and for any amount of time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Thank you, Judge. Next up. Mike, presentation regarding the FY 2021 budget, Maricopa County Constable's office. And Mike, I'm sure that you're going to come up here and say, I'm going to save you some time.
I'm going to save you some time, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for mentioning that. Members, and Mr. Chairman, thank you for allowing us just a couple of minutes, and we will bring it back on time for you. I did bring with me, representing the 26 elected constables and our wonderful deputies and staff, Ms. Patrice Goodman, who's been on board since April as our administrator. You might remember that she took Tim's place when he retired. I have been so pleased in the level of support that I received from her. And again, speaking on behalf of all of us, it's a godsend to have her. So quickly, I wanted to just walk you through a couple of things, if we could kind of key up the slide here. I'm really glad that Judge Walty and our colleagues have taken a moment to kind of talk about some of the increases in family court. Because as you can well imagine, that also has an effect on us. If you'll go to the next, there we go. So for this year, over last year, we served 31,000 cases in our system. That's a 9% increase over last year. And more importantly, when you look at things like writs of restitution and orders of protection, you can kind of get a feel for where we're going to be going into the future. Family court generates alone a huge proportion of these orders of protection that come out. I'm pleased that the Arizona point system for that, and I think you have a little bit of information in the past on that, to automate the orders of protection statewide has started to launch, like all new programs. It's fraught with a few problems, but it's certainly on track to be the kind of program that all of us want to see used for these important projects. But as you can tell, we've done all of that with the current staff we have. And much like Jeff said a few moments ago, we're not asking for anything this year. We wanted to let you know, we're going to stretch this thing even further than we've done. And we're doing it through the innovation and the kind of things that you heard from my colleagues a few minutes ago. I'd like to publicly thank our sheriff. Paul and his staff have been incredible in helping us to change a culture and work through a very diverse population. As you know, we're one of your more unique settings. 26 elected officials, eight deputies, two support staff. It's an amazing group of people who have, using the sheriff's policies and procedures, their training academies, and partnering with the rest of our law enforcement statewide. We've really begun to change a lot of things about how constables work, not only in Maricopa County, but statewide. And I'm really quite proud of that. out and trying to visit with people about warrants and some of the other things that are out there. That's what our warrant reduction program has actually done since inception several years ago. As you see from that, we've been able to save $3 million in taxpayers by getting people to come back to court, actually appear before the judge, get placed back on a payment plan, and have the court coffers receiving dollars again, rather than having someone locked up at Fourth Avenue on minor charges costing us more money in incarceration costs and the like. So our hope is to continue that program this year. I've got the best folks on that thing. They make literally probably 100 contacts a day some days with people, and get them back themselves right before the judge without any additional contact or cost to the county. So we'll go to the next one for just a minute. Couple of things the board was concerned about a couple of years ago. We had some constables that were behind on their training annually. Currently, this year, we're at 100% for all of our training. Same thing with log problems. As you know, all constables statewide are required to fill out a state log. That problem has now been fixed, to the point that I almost have zero issues with it going forward that aren't really just normal kinds of fumatic problems that we work on every day. But we're there, and we're continuing to keep that in place, just like you'd like it. Here's the one I'm the most proud of. We haven't had a complaint on Maricopa County Constable with the Ethics Board in over a year. And that's the work of the constables and our support staffs themselves. They're the ones that made that happen. I'm really, really proud of them for that. And even more importantly, we've become subject matter experts now in civil law. There's not a day goes by that the constables don't receive a telephone call from the sheriff's office personnel in the field, or one of the many police officers working patrol someplace in Maricopa County saying, I'm here on this kind of an event. I have this kind of a civil problem. What do you think I should do? Or how about if I do this, this, and this? Will that meet the standards? And that's because of the way people are viewing your constables. And again, I can't think of a bigger, better compliment than to have someone call you and say, be my subject matter expert in this field. You have those kinds of people in the Maricopa County constabulary right now. If you go to the next one, one of the other ones I'm really proud of, we achieved this year an actual certification for the first time as an entire group. We're now certified, like a lot of other law enforcement personnel, to actually provide Narcan in the field if we encounter somebody who's in, you know, physical strains and processes of dying from an opioid addiction. And we made that a priority for our entire unit. So everyone has gone now. Everyone has been a part of that. And I know in the past, you've sort of had some people that didn't want to be a part. They wanted to be their own little entity. They still are, as they take pride in being elected officials. But they also saw that it was important for us to do more and more things together as a group in order to show not only you, but the citizens and everybody else, a different side of the constables. And I'm really proud that we're there. Our service fees for next year are currently on track right now. I'm really pleased they're exactly where we anticipated them to be. Currently, we have no new grant applications in, but we're anticipating some grant applications in the future. The sheriff's office was instrumental in helping me get all of our constables and deputy constables certified in what's called the TOC system, or the ability to manage confidential criminal history information. And now that we're there, we can take them to the next level, where you can actually get to the point where, in the future, we'll be able to access the data in our cars that will make the constables and the people we serve more safe. Right now, there's a gap. Sheriff's deputies can do it. Our officers and police departments in the field can do it. We don't yet have that capability, but we have the ability now to go on track and do that into the future. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or make any other statements that you have. Do you take a break for a second here?
Mr. Chairman?
Steve?
I'd like to file a complaint against the... Congratulations, and good...
It was good, right? He had me for a minute. Yeah, he had me.
But congratulations, because you're right. I think, not necessarily in our tenure, but prior to our tenure, there were some hiccups and speed bumps along the way with the constables as a group, and rightfully so, that we needed to fix things to make it work better. And it seems, in recent years, maybe the past 24 to 36 months, that that has been the case, and attributed to your leadership and that of your colleagues. And it's nice to be in a good place with the constables. So congratulations on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chigri. Thanks so much for noticing. You know, you'll see in there our goals and objectives for next year, continue with our training. Our training is that most important piece to me that's making the difference for us in the complaint field in particular. Our officers are safer. Safer officers are more confident. More confident officers are making better field decisions. That's been the hallmark of my career for four decades. It's certainly the case here with the constables. So we're going to see, you're going to continue to see us shouldering this year forward with that kind of a process. And the other one, again, is to get even better integrated with our law enforcement and criminal justice partners. They help make us safe, too. Twice a day, I've been on telephones with different leaders from different departments, talking about problems, interacting with both people the constables are dealing with and the same people the police and sheriff's department and other are dealing with. So that's a key secret for us. And with that, I just, much like you heard from the judge and our colleagues, you know, thank all of you for the support. We couldn't do this without you. Being elected officials is a difficult job. No one knows better than you. But being an elected official that has a board as great and diverse as this one with a kind of forward-thinking is a godsend. It has helped me considerably. It has helped every one of the other constables and our staffs, and we applaud you for your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm looking over here at Steve Gallardo, because I think you and I have talked about the constable issues right when you first took office, but it even predated me, and I talked to Steve about it. So maybe you'd like to say a couple of words?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, I just want to kind of echo along with Mr. Chigri has indicated or stated. You had a great group of constables. You have some hard-working men and women out there that are doing a tough job. I've always said this, if there was one elected job I would never be able to do, and that's a constable. I'd never be able to evict anyone. I just couldn't, you know? And I know that's a tough... That's one of the responsibilities the constables have to have. You have to serve those papers, and they do it well. I mean, you know, just with the constables in my district that I really get to work with and talk to on a regular basis. And I know it's not just my district, it's all five of them. They just do an outstanding job, and just want to congratulate you. And the entire constable teams, I mean, all of them have just done a wonderful jobs, and continue to do what you're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Gallardo. Thanks so much for that. And for the others, if you haven't had an opportunity and would really like to spend some time, if you can give me a couple hours of your time, we'll go out and show you exactly the kind of things that the constables are seeing in the field. I can probably even arrange to make sure that someone would see how someone is treated, for instance, on an eviction process. There's a lot of media attention that goes with that particular subject, and I will tell you that I'm really proud that Maricopa County is one of those places where evictions really take several steps to make sure that everyone gets an opportunity to hear, to have their day in court and be heard. And, you know, it's a tough problem. We're running very quickly out of affordable housing. If we didn't have the ability to remove people, sometimes I'm always afraid that housing would be to the point when no one could afford it. And so it's a tough balance all the time, but thank you, sir, for noticing, because that is one of the toughest things, along with the orders of protection and some of the other things like that, where constables and other law enforcement officers are at their most risk.
But, Mr. Chairman, I think we'd all agree. I mean, it is a tough, tough process, but there's a way to do it.
Yes, sir.
You do it with respect and dignity, and you treat these folks as if they were like family. And so that's what I see now. And I see a lot of our constables really looking at it from a humanitarian side of it, you know, and understanding that these families are just in a tough situation, so...
One of the things, just briefly, that's helped us to get there, Mr. Gallardo and Mr. Chairman, is the fact that many more of us, including myself, are now scheduled to go to mental health certification training. I'll actually become a certified crisis counselor out of this process. And it gives us a really nice ability to not only help manage our events, but a lot of times in other events where we're dealing with particularly mentally ill folks, it's going to be real key. You've seen that now with Phoenix Police Department and the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office, and more and more agencies training more people to be crisis-minded. The interesting thing about that is we actually started down that road in the beginning stages of my career in the '70s, and we sort of lost our way a few times. I'm so pleased and proud to see the kind of training that's going on now for officers in the academy and forward in that arena, to not only help people treat them like family, but understand the special needs that go with these kinds of problems, and maybe why that person ended up where they are. It helps us do such a better job at helping to manage that event.
Supervisor Sellers?
Yeah, I probably shouldn't admit this, but when I first became a county supervisor, I was told I needed to appoint a person to replace a constable. And my first question was, what's a constable do? So we've got some things to work through right now, but once we get past some of these things, I'd love to take you up on your offer and learn a little bit more about what constables do.
Mr. Sellers, Mr. Chairman, that would be wonderful. And for your first official act, you made a great appointment. Ben Holleran has been one of the best additions to the constables that I can remember. He's just gotten right in there, and his experience in the Illinois State Police has been invaluable for us, so...
Well, I'll wrap it up just... Thank you. And you're coming in way under time, so you saved us a little bit of time, so I just wanted to...
Mr. Gates likes that. He gave me a high five on that one.
Yeah. Give you guys some credit. When I was appointed, I remember my former colleague, Denny Barney, was discussing, like, trying to work with the constables like herding cats. And at that point, we were having some issues, but I remember working with Ron and Phil and now yourself, and you guys have really righted the ship and have become, I know, a model for this state on how to run this. They are publicly elected officials, and you have a very, very tough job, but they are doing a fantastic job. Please let them know. I appreciate them so much. Stay safe on what you guys do.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members, thank you for your time.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. Next up, item number four, presentation regarding the FY 2021 budget, Maricopa County Recorder's Office. So Mr. Adrian Fontes is here. Thank you, Adrian. Are you bringing up your team?
All of them.
All of them?
All of them.
Awesome.
Not just our team, but all of our team.
Oh, Lord. So, welcome. Thanks for being here.
Oh, yeah, I guess I need a clicker. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I bring you personal greetings and a Happy New Year. Mr. Chair, I apologize for missing your passing with the gavel. It's good to see you in that seat again. And for our good friend from District Two, I'm sure he's happy to see this tie around my neck again, which I wore just for you, Superintendent Chigri.
Thank you, thank you. Red, red, red. And he intentionally missed your passing with a gavel.
There's rumors.
He had to go buy the red tie.
Yes, yes. Anyway, Mr. Chair and members of the board, I'm Adrian Fontes, the Maricopa County Recorder, and I'm here to present our fiscal year 2021 budget requests. There are, at the end, some supplemental requests, which we will distinguish from these when we get to that point. And what you will see is a bit of a recap at the beginning, right before we get to our current requests. So I will advance this, I think. There we go. All right. So very briefly, in the past, we did focus very much on the Elections Department, some of the infrastructure therein, and modernization of a lot of our different systems. Presently, we're looking at investing in the Recorder's Office infrastructure, most specifically to enhance some of our customer service, which does bleed into the Elections world through our voter registration duties. Also, hoping to remove some of our delaying and processing, some of our statutorily mandated items, not the least of which is, as I indicated, voter registration, and our recording items, which I'll bring to your attention in a little while. And you can see over here on the left-hand, on the right-hand side of the slide, some of our major priorities in the past. We include these to open just a little bit of context for historical reference, and so folks can see where we've moved over the last four years. Our three priorities for the fiscal 2021 budget are, number one, adequate staffing to meet our workload, which is not only increasing, but our work types are changing with changing technological environments. Number two, achieving structural balance of the IT surcharge fund, which is an independent fund that comes off of a $4 fee on every recording. That I'll discuss separately as well, and physical and election security. Now, on the chart, we compare back to 2015, two different sections here. First, as to registered voters, we can see that we had 15 full-time employees in voter registration in 2015 at 2 million registered, active registered voters. In 2019, our recent, very recent numbers, we're looking at 2.35 million with 16 FTEs. And so proportionately, we're not where we need to be, and that does present some problems. Insofar as recording documents is concerned, you can see we've had a significant drop-off in the number of staff members that we have, although we have expanded our capacity by remote recording locations around the valley, around Maricopa County, which is great for providing services. Unfortunately, those duties take a little bit longer per transaction, and so the reduction in FTEs that we've had over the last several years does cause a little bit of a backlog there.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Adrian. Good to see you. Just a question on this, then. In 2019, how many employees doing the early voting responsibility?
And so, well, the early voting responsibilities are not exclusive, because all of our early voting facilities also contain folks that are going to be working on Election Day. And so the voter registration specifically does not include any of the Election Department folks, even if they fall under the purview of early voting. We're talking specifically about voter registration staff in our department here in the West Court Building.
So do you have an idea, at this point, for 2020, how many people will be involved? If we had to put a number on that for FTE doing early voting responsibilities?
I'm going to defer to co-director Jarrett with all of the Election Department-specific items I'm going to be taking, even though we have been working in collaboration, as you're more than well aware, Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Gates. We're very specifically focusing on the recorder side of the House and the voter registration side of the House to distinguish from the other very complex area here. So if it pleases you, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to be evasive, but I'm going to leave those specific numbers to him.
Perfect. Thank you.
Insofar as the structural balance of the IT surcharge fund, what we have in this fund, as I indicated, is a statutorily mandated $4 per filing. The problem that we have is, not only have our filings increased, but the nature of the information technology that is required, the security that is required for those, not the least of which is the salaries for the folks who do those kinds of jobs, have increased significantly. So we'll be hoping to make some adjustments there. And of course, physical and election security does also include information to voters and becoming those trusted sources. And so we'll move forward on, how are we going to pay for all of this, I'm sure is on your minds? Well, that's not going to be much of a problem. We, because of a recent statutory change, are seeing a significant increase in revenues to the general fund through our basic recording fees. There will be no money coming out of the general fund for anything that we're asking for. As a matter of fact, we will be putting quite a large chunk of money back into the general fund because of those increases. Now, those increases occurred mostly because a significant number of our rural counties in Arizona were suffering very badly, budgetary-wise, under the old recording fee scheme. The new scheme really was at the advancement of a lot of those rural counties. We obviously have an increase in our recordings. Those fees have helped us, and they will help the county's bottom line. Overall, we're only asking for a small bit of that significant increase back into the Recorder's budget.
Supervisor Chigri?
Mr. Fontes, so I'm sorry, I'm a little slow on the last slide where you're talking about the registered voter increase from 2015 to 2019. That's almost 18% increase. That's pretty impressive. Is that... So we're seeing about 85,000 to 87,000 people moving to Maricopa County a year. Is it that population? Is it the new Arizonans or new residents of Maricopa County that you think are a majority of those folks that are registering to vote? Or is it someone turning 18? Or is it someone saying, hey, I've been lazy, I'm 25 years old, never registered to vote, so I'm going to... Do you know? I mean, that's kind of a tough question, I realize, but I would be curious to see, who are those people?
I'll fill in the bottom oval, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Chigri.
It's round now. You don't connect the line.
Round now. It's the bottom oval, and I'll say all of the above. Maricopa County...
to see, who are those people?
I'll fill in the bottom oval, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Chukri.
It's round now, you don't connect the dot, you know, the line.
Round now. It's the bottom oval, and I'll say all of the above. Maricopa County has a growing youthful population that is naturally occurring. We've got a lot of folks moving here, as you're fully aware, from a lot of other places, and they're registering to vote, they're getting engaged civically, and part of our public outreach has really gotten a lot more folks engaged. We saw between midterm 2014 and midterm 2018, a 42% increase in voter turnout in Maricopa County. And we attribute part of that to what was happening politically, but we only saw a 17% increase nationally. So Maricopa County's voters are turning out a lot better, and we think that's because we're taking a much more active role in promoting the time, place, and manner of those elections so that folks can go out and make those choices. So it's a combination of our outreach and the natural growth of this county.
Okay, second to that, on this current slide, you were talking about the other 14 counties, so we're talking about a bill that went through the legislature, I'm assuming, that raised fees across the board for this, for the surcharge. And do you know what percentage of what you're seeing in increased dollars into the office, what that has to do with also this population increase, right? Because there, hopefully, some of these folks are buying houses, or they're building new homes, or real estate transactions are happening, and those recordings are happening with you, and people are paying more and more fees. So I'm curious to see if there's a way to be able to discern what that percentage may or may not be.
So in the prior slide, between 2015 and 2019, we've seen almost a 12% increase in the number of filings. We broke a million filings this year, I believe it was in November, and our recording folks are really doing a great job keeping up with that work. And in a minute, we'll discuss some of the other very positive things they've been doing by keeping up with that work. So it is the same as what you're describing, sort of an all-of-the-above sort of a circumstance. We've got a lot more folks, and the increase in revenue that is coming from the increased fees, again, will not tap into the general fund. It will actually contribute to the general fund significantly.
Adrian, this, I mean, the jump is just from 18 and 19 to what is?
19 to 20.
The current fiscal year.
Yeah, what, I mean, what caused that huge jump? Was there a legislative change? Why such a huge jump for 19, 20?
That's exactly as I was discussing, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gallardo. In 2018, the state legislature put forth a bill that was going to change, as of July 1st in 2019, the amount of money and standardized the fees. And the reason they did this was federal mandates requiring notice ahead of time for transactional fees. The prior sliding scale did not give consumers the kind of protection that they required. The new standard fee gave those protections to consumers. That increase in the filing fee itself, overall, gave our office significant jump in the amount of revenue that we bring in for the operation. And so it really did help really significantly in a lot of the rural counties. We are definitely going to be able to cover all of our expenses that we're requesting. And so I'll go ahead and move on.
Yeah, before our legislature sees that we're bringing in money.
Yeah, yeah, well, I leave that battle to you all. So really, what we're doing is, we're presented with an opportunity to invest in our people. They are our most critical resource, and if we can't support our people, then we've got a problem. And their work is imperative, really. We want to guarantee that folks have the right to vote in a timely manner. Voter registration requires some processing. We want to make sure that we close transactions soon enough, and I'll talk about, a little bit about the economic impact of that in a moment. And again, getting back to that, the positive economic impact that we have in doing our job better, faster, and more securely on the recording side of the House is very plainly evident, as I mentioned at the Chandler Chamber breakfast that Supervisor Sellers was at not too long ago. And so the forecasts are listed here on this slide. I won't dwell on that too much, because I want to make sure that you all have plenty of ammunition for the future. We'll move to slide number six for our specific above baseline requests. Insofar as the voter registration department is concerned, last year's request was for four voter registration folks. We unfortunately didn't get that, but we made some adjustments. Those adjustments put us into a place, and those adjustments were all within our own budget, to where this time around, we're only asking for two additional leads. We also have some requests for the statewide voter registration system, the Avid system, which has come online, and some shifting costs there, and transferring of all of our voter registration mailing costs from the Elections Department, which is really not an Elections Department function, it's a voter registration function, back over to voter registration. As you know from my prior slides, we did a lot of adjustments in budgeting, putting stuff in the right places over the last several years. This is one of those last of the tweaks that we've been doing. Interestingly-
Adrian, real quick, does that mean a corresponding shift that on the Elections Department is going to see a decrease of that in mailing costs? Or is it, what do you mean by that? So transfer of VR mailing costs?
So we're shifting it from one budget to the other, but the Elections Department is still going to have some other requests as well, so there will be some significant, some offsets. And so this is really just the idea of taking, we've got a few line items that we're bringing back over into the appropriate places, because, so for example, many of our Elections IT needs were being spent through the IT surcharge, which really didn't necessarily match letter to letter with statute. And so we made those adjustments in the past, and we're making some of these other adjustments as we move forward. We're just kind of cleaning up some of the leftovers from prior years. One of the things that's very important about increasing our voter registration staff is we have suspense accounts and backlogs for voters, and we don't want voters to be disenfranchised. Some of those backlogs last for a little while, and so we want to get folks processed through. We brought some of our folks' numbers down that were in backlogs from the several thousands and tens of thousands. You know, when you get to the point where you've got 2.5 million voters, 2.3 of which are active voters in a system, you have to manually process these folks before you either put them on suspense or inactivate them. Alternatively, if you're bringing them back onboard, you've got to make sure those records are accurate. And so the amount of work that we're taking care of is huge. Additionally, after the LULAC settlement, that was basically the Fed-only voters proof of citizenship question, again, one of the things that one of our friends down on 17th Avenue spoke to last week, Kelly Townsend from the legislature, talked about Fed-only voters and making sure that we can get them voting a full ballot. Well, that requires a bit of research and a lot of work. And so those voters, we want to include as up and down the ballot as far as possible. That's been a concern of our office, because we want to make sure that our list maintenance is top-notch, and so that work needs to be done. And let's see here, again, just as a quick note, when we went from 15 to 16 in voter registration through our own adjustments, what we actually did was, we took one of our senior-level supervisory positions, brought that one down a bit, found some cost savings, and created two. So of the request we had last year for four, we've reduced that to two, because we internally did make some adjustments. So we've already sacrificed a little bit, and we're hoping we can get help on that next Moving on to our other above baseline requests, in the Recording Department, one of the most important things that the Recording Department has done is been able to index and data process much more quickly. In 2017, when we did our initial report, I did indicate that we were processing data overseas. We've completely repatriated all of our data processing back here, back home into the United States, into Maricopa County. That takes time, that takes energy, but here's what the benefit is. For example, you buy a house, you're getting ready to put in a new pool, the company that you're working with wants to see that those documents, the closing documents and everything has been recorded, they're going to check online. At three to six weeks for indexing, which was what we were at, sometimes deals won't happen. Sometimes those financings won't go through, because that proof's not going to show up on our website. And that's just because our office was processing this information slowly. Well, we've made some significant adjustments with the three temporary employees that you gave us last year. That three-to-six-week processing time that held up deals, held up jobs from being produced, and really kept some people from making those decisions to get a new driveway or to do some of the other things they do with new houses, we've reduced that down to 24 to 72 hours to get those things going. And so now, we are hopefully moving in a much more nimble and agile way. We're hoping that these transactions will move at the pace of business so that folks can get along with the business of doing more business. So we don't know what the boost to the economy is because of this. It's something that's relatively complex, and we haven't had the time or energy to study. But we do know that when these things get posted, people can get stuff done, and it's getting the stuff done that's important for businesses. I know, Mr. Chairman, you mentioned businesses can grow and residents can find good jobs here. Well, if we get our job done faster and more efficiently, as we've done with those temporary employees, I'd like to keep doing that, make those permanent, and continue to do the hard day-to-day work that our recording staff has been doing. So we'd like those over baselines there. And so to support this, we also would like to make sure that we get our IT budget in order. And this is the, some of the architecture in the IT surcharge fund. We want to bring the $527,000-plus into the Recorder's Budget from the surcharge fund so that we can strengthen that fund, restructure it. We want to make sure that we get this non-recurring GIS servers up. As you know, our GIS department is one of the finest west of the Mississippi River. We do everything from represincting to helping the post office make their zip codes lines and boundaries. So we do a lot of work for a lot of folks, and we're the best shop in town, so we need that. There's also a couple other items on here I won't go into too much detail on, you can read some of that stuff. So we do need to reserve, just for emergency purposes as well, some of those IT dedicated fund balances, and so that's part of this. I'll try to move along here. I think I only have a couple more slides.
With the, so with the Help Desk thing, taking it from the surcharge fund that we just saw on a graph has been, has all of a sudden increased?
Mr. Chair, let me correct you on that. The IT surcharge fund, if you-
No, the Help Desk, the-
Right.
The Help Desk. Well, and you can say the IT too, but go ahead.
So the $4 IT surcharge per filing, that fund was completely funding the Help Desk. What we'd like to do is pull that Help Desk funding out of the surcharge so that we can actually turn the surcharge into sort of a technology pure, security pure. We want to buy stuff out of that money, because the stuff is a lot more expensive. A lot of those staff that are still in that fund are also much more expensive. But our Help Desk does a lot of other things as well. For example, they work very closely in and with the Election Department on realigning all of our voter check-in site books. They do a lot of the kiosk functions at the different recording kiosks around, and they do a lot of that other electronic troubleshooting that we do, because we're a pretty technology-heavy department. And so those folks really carry multiple functions. We want to bring them into the regular recording budget out of the IT surcharge, because the costs of technology and security have increased so much, but that surcharge money hasn't grown. So that $4 is per filing, that didn't go up at all. And it's by statute dedicated to a particular function. But some of those other functions that have been traditionally funded in that bucket, we want to pull them out into the regular recording bucket.
So you're not saying that we're getting very close to being structurally out of balance, you just want a plan so that date does not occur?
Absolutely. That's accurate. That's part of the investment that we're hoping to make with the additional income that we're making from those other filing fees. Our active, or I'm sorry, our above baseline request, this one for $700,000 includes something that is, ought to be most near and dear to all of us, and these are some very specific items over at McTech, some security, force protection matters over on the north lobby and the south lobby of McTech, a facility you're all familiar with. And I think that's relatively self-explanatory. Now, there are some other points that I want to mention. I will turn almost all of the rest of the Election Department stuff over to Mr. Jarrett, the co-director for Election Day and Emergency Voting. And by the way, Ray Valenzuela, our early voting director, is also here. We're looking at, over time, coming back to you with a fee increase for our jurisdictions, our school districts, our municipalities, our water districts, and so forth. That will be a per-voter increase, and we're hoping that it is small, we're hoping that it is phased in, and we're hoping that it is incremental over time so that those other jurisdictions will not be shocked during their budget cycles. I know Scott's going to take care of some of that, but I want to lay this groundwork right now. The Maricopa County Elections Department and Recorder's Office run elections for more jurisdictions than just about any office in the country, and we do a great job for all of those other sub-jurisdictions. For example, Tempe and Chandler are having municipal elections one week before the presidential preference election. Those are separate. They require their own work, their own ballots, their own staff, and so forth. We want to make sure that we are delivering best-in-class, but at the same time, we want to make sure the folks that are doing that are safe. After having been declared critical infrastructure by the Department of Homeland Security in January 2017, and based on what we've seen coming out of Congress and some of the other places and bits of information, we know that we've got to protect our people. And so that's what this $700,000 is about. It's about investing in our folks. All of the rest of the election stuff, of course, as I indicated, I'm going to leave to co-director Jarrett, who did work with Ray to make sure that we had the best presentation for you possible. Two last slides. This one is going to be our supplemental request. Now, the current fiscal year we are in, for which we're all working very closely together, along with our good friend Phil the Ballot, who can be found at beballerready.vote, we're out there talking to folks. We're making sure that folks understand that we are a trusted source of information, they can find us and get the best information they need to vote. But because the August primary has been moved up to the beginning of August, and because early ballots are going to get mailed out very early in July, we need to start talking to voters during this fiscal year for that primary in August of 2020. This supplemental request helps do that. It helps do it in two ways. Number one, we're asking for $200,000 for additional educational advertising campaign for the August 2020 primary. That's going to help voters understand that there is a date change. We do have a lot of folks who are in and out of Maricopa County through the course of the year on different calendars, and we want to make sure to be able to get into the media markets and buy what we need to buy ahead of time, because we know it's going to be a relatively expensive cycle, and we've got to get that information out there. Number two, one of the best ways to engage voters and make sure they've got the information they need is that one little thing that I'm sure you've all heard about just as much as I have every time you talk to someone in public, and that's the "I voted" sticker. And we've got a great opportunity here to do something really serious and really important with something that just seems like fun. We've got a new ballot style. We've gone from arrows to ovals. We've got a new primary date. And to make sure that we've got folks' attention, and to make sure that they've got something in their hands that they can draw their attention to, that will take them then to the correct website, take them to the trusted sources with phone numbers and other information, we've decided that it is not too much to ask, that we include "I voted" early stickers with every single early ballot that goes out for the August primary of 2020 and for the general election of 2020. I understand that there's going to be some folks who cringe a little bit at this and think it's a little frivolous, and that's okay. It draws attention to important voter information, and it helps battle the misinformation and disinformation that is truly the problem that we are facing. Folks are capitalizing on the fact that other folks don't know where to get the right information. And if we can bring attention to our websites, our phone numbers, and our data, specifically through those ballots and through those envelopes, even if it means spending a few extra bucks on a sticker, then we're going to be doing exactly the opposite of what our foreign enemies want. We're going to be bolstering our democracy, we're going to be helping to share information about correct and trusted sources, and we're going to make sure that we do that, maybe even with a smile on our face, because democracy is, can be a good time sometimes, it should be celebrated. Now, as I finish up and go to questions before I hand it over, I want to make absolutely certain, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, that you hear two names, and those names are Richard Green and Berta Ramirez. They're sitting here, and they have done work that so many people never see and never hear. They've taken some incredibly complex budgets, some big numbers on cycles that happen once every two or four years. They've reconstructed some stuff for Scott, who you'll hear in a minute, and Ray, and our office, and they've done yeoman's work. And so I'd like to definitely give them a shout-out in our Administrative Services Division, not only for serving the Recorder's Office, but the Elections Department on your behalf as well, and I'm glad you allowed me to recognize them. I'd also like to- I'd also like to thank you all for your cooperation, particularly former Chairman Gates, with whom we spent a great part of the last year-plus, not only forging a great personal relationship that I'm grateful for, but for really showing people that we don't have to fight to get things done in government. And I'm very proud to be standing here as a partner. Now, to you, Mr. Chairman, and to the rest of the board, I'm happy to move forward into 2020. Be best-in-class. Show folks that we can get it done. Maybe be a little boring, but now we've got Phil to lighten things up a bit. And that having been said, I'm going to go ahead on behalf of the director, co-director for early voting, and bring up Scott Jarrett, the co-director for Election Day and Emergency Voting, who will present the Election Department budget.
Adrian, real quick.
Sure.
It's not frivolous. I've talked about that sticker. My dad loves that sticker when he votes day-of. He loves that sticker. We all love it because he shows it to everybody. But that sticker is paid for by the Realtors, right? Is that still a...
It was.
Is that still, have they ceased doing that?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll be blunt. Every once in a while, those good folks, as much as we love them and as much as they've been amazing partners over the years, will promote some items that are going to end up on those ballots. And quite frankly, I would prefer that we pay for that through the administrative costs and the increases in the fees that we've received so that we don't have the appearance of any kind of impropriety. It's the integrity of our elections that's important to me. I love those folks. I talk to them all the time. There's a likelihood that we might be using some of their facilities for polling locations and so forth. And I consider them great partners on the recorder side of the house. But every single detail, every T needs to be crossed, every I needs to be dotted. And with all respect to them and the good work they've done with us for a long, long, long time, which is definitely appreciated, I think it's time that we move to independently funding those.
Okay. $120,000? Is that day-of too? So, the $120,000 is...
The $120,000 is for what? For the early voting. We'd like to be able to, it's a very conservative number. We'd like to squeeze day-of out of that as well. I think we might get close, but we will find, we will make sure to find the right resources for those day-of stickers as well. Day-of stickers are not going away.
Yeah.
I can guarantee that, not only to you, Mr. Chairman, but to your dad.
Okay, very good.
As silly as the stickers may seem, they are so critical. I mean, the day you don't provide stickers is the day, including Mr. Fontes, are being hung upside down by our...
I'm a big fan of the stickers, Mr. Chairman.
Exactly. However, they get paid for, but they're important.
Scott, thank you, Adrian.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. And Scott, before you get started as well, I'm trying to run a tight timeframe. I know that you're going, you've submitted that you will be giving some more formalized reports on the run-up to these elections for our board, so I know that we're going to get to see you a lot. So, you feel free to speed up your presentation because you're going to be talking about these types of things through this election process.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I will have a, is this working now?
Yes.
A brief presentation for you, and I appreciate the opportunity to meet with you today and discuss our budget priorities and different items that we'll be requesting to help ensure that we have accessible, reliable, secure, efficient, and transparent elections through the 2020 cycle. Many, and we're very grateful in the Elections Department for the resources that were provided to us in the last budget cycle, and many of those have met our needs. We were provided 26 new staff members through that budget cycle. We're also provided new tabulation equipment. Through the last six months, we've done a bang-up job, being able to hire most of those staff. Those staff members were, I think, right around 70% of those 26 new positions are staffed. The reason we haven't hired all of them is we did want to hire those supervisors, those management-level staff first, and then give them the ability to hire those staff that would meet their needs. So, with that, I want to just talk real briefly about the structure of the Elections Department. And so, what's up on this slide here is the structure that was agreed to with the Board of Supervisors and the Recorder in the Elections Operation Agreement back in October. And for the last, for the last three to four months, we've been working, Mr. Fontes referenced our budget team within the Recorder's Office as well as the County Budget Office to develop an accounting structure that would mirror this Election Operation Agreement structure that was agreed to, agreed upon. And so, we've been working with that so we can then account for costs in alignment with that structure. So, what we've done is we've taken our baseline budget, and we've been able to put those in those different buckets. So, early voting, that would report up to the Recorder, those shared responsibilities that report up to both the Board of Supervisors and the Recorder, as well as the Election Day that reports up through me to the Board of Supervisors. And I just wanted to point out that the vast majority of our cost drivers in our baseline budget are related to staffing, those permanent staffing positions. However, we do have, not a lot of people are aware of this, but we have those off-cycle elections that, every year, we have at least four elections. In 2021, we'll have two, a March and a May election that occur after our big elections, the August and the November ones. And so, those are our other cost drivers, those temporary staffing services that you see, the supplies and expenditure, and then also the capital expenditure line item, which actually fully represents our annual payment for the brand-new tabulation equipment.
Supervisor Gates.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Mr. Jarrett, kind of following up on my question then to Mr. Fontes, are these, these top two lines, can you actually, could you add a, an FTE, or I guess in the temporary, in that, you know, a number to attach to each one of these, a number of employees?
So, yes, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gates, for the top line there, we are at just at 52 full-time equivalent positions that are supporting the Elections Department. In the temporary staffing services, we do have in our, on our books, just over 200 staff members that will support, but we do hire additional staff members for those elections. So, and really, it's depending on what that election is. And we don't know until usually the filing deadline, so we don't know what those March elections will look like or those May elections. It could be upwards of 28 different jurisdictions that would request to have an election. If we have 28 jurisdictions, that would be 28 replacement ballot sites, seven poll workers per site. So, that really drives what those costs are. So, these are averages based on what we've seen in the past, and I don't have those exact numbers for you, but it can vary year to year.
So, Mr. Chair, then, you couldn't say, you know, there's 30 here on Election Day and 10 here, and on shared, and 10 early voting. It's instead sort of a, you've taken like a percentage, like this person in the Elections Department is going to spend 80% of their time on Election Day and 20 on early vote. Is that how you got to these numbers?
So, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gates, actually, so what we, how we got to these numbers were how they were allocated through those different buckets that we set up.
Okay.
And I'll talk to you in a minute about our budget priorities, and that is one of those budget priorities because we do use staff, especially for early voting sites. We'll have the same poll workers manning those early voting sites that will then work on Election Day. And we haven't got to that level of sophistication. So, that is a priority moving forward to be able to determine, okay, how much, how do we allocate these funds, and can we break them up between early voting and Election Day?
Great.
Thank you. And as I was discussing, the capital expenditures, that does represent just our tabulation equipment, so that's the full annual lease cost. So, during the last budget cycle, the board approved the lease, a $6.1 million lease for the Dominion tabulation equipment. That comes out to be about $2 million a year. So, as I was discussing, our budget priorities. So, the first priority we have is to establish a baseline budget for our ELE-1, or those are our big even-year election cycles for, so this upcoming next year, our August primary and our general election. We have not had a baseline budget for this fund in the past, and we will be, based on our new structure, measuring through that new accounting stream, being able to determine what that baseline is moving forward. We did prepare a budget for this year. We built that from the ground up, some of it based off of historical patterns, some of it based off of projections, based on turnout this year. I'll be discussing that a little bit in the next slides upcoming, but that is one of our major priorities for the budget, this next budget year. Also, is to track those expenditures to, so we can get that level of sophistication, be able to delineate how many of our staff, poll workers, what percentage of that cost is attributed to early voting versus Election Day. And then, lastly, is we have over 100 different jurisdictions that we will be updating our IGAs with. These IGAs were last updated about two decades ago, and the fee structure was in 2010. Right now, real rough estimates, we're looking at potentially not recouping 50% of our charges or our costs associated with these elections. So, we're currently going through a fee study to determine what those costs are, and then we can revisit, how much do we want to then allocate out and charge back to those jurisdictions? So, we do have, even though during the last budget cycle, we were awarded those 26 positions, the new tabulation equipment, we do have some new requests for this year. The first one is our site books. So, these are our check-in stations at the polling location. They've expedited how quickly we can check in voters. They've also reduced provisional ballots in the polling location from over 120,000 in prior elections to in last 2018 general election, to just under 16,000. If you compare that with Pima County, we had about 18,000 provisional ballots, so 2,000 less than Pima County did. So, what, we have about 2,000 site books. There's about 200 that are in need of repair or replacement, so we're projecting this cost to be about $270,000. When you couple that with our, we're requesting eight additional ballot-on-demand printers. So, when we purchase those ballot-on-demand printers, we purchase enough for 40 vote centers. And there's a few of our printers that are at their end-of-life cycle, and we'll be requesting these that will bring us back to whole with those ballot-on-demand printers so we can support those 40 vote centers during elections. Also, we're looking to build a Election Day Command Center. So, last year, when I was an auditor observing Election Day, one of the things that we noticed was there were four different hotlines supporting Election Day. We had a hotline for a troubleshooter, we had a hotline for our poll workers, we had a hotline for our IT techs, and we had a hotline for, to support our vote centers. And they were in separate location. Well, that increase, separate locations, that increases risks. We may, something may fall through the cracks. Now that we've been given, Procurement Services has moved out of what we call our McTech South now. That's created an opportunity for us to move into the old reprographics area and create a command center. And we're looking at, that would be about $250,000. That will allow us to combine all those hotlines, provide technology so we can, we have a really robust dashboard system from those site books that we can monitor what's going on in the polling locations, what are wait times at the polling location, did all poll workers show up and check in, how many voters have checked in that day at the polling location? So, we'll be able to monitor that through this command center. And we're looking at that cost to be about $250,000. As I mentioned, we do not have a baseline budget for our ELE-1 or our even-year large cycle budgets, but we did go through and determine how, how much we would need for the upcoming 2021 budget cycle or 2020 elections. We are projecting historic turnout, upwards of 1.8 or 1.9 voters will actually vote in the upcoming election cycle. And with that, we were able to determine that'll be about $17.2 million to support both the primary and the general elections. And there's a couple things on this slide I wanted to point out. First off is, when you look at the temporary staffing workers for poll workers, those are fixed costs. We have about 1.2 million in both the primary and the general election. That is because we have the same number of polling locations for both elections. Where the changes in costs come in from the general to the primary is the variable costs, and those are all related to mail-in ballots. We currently, per early ballot packet, that costs are just over $3 per packet, so when you get those additional voters in the general election, that is what drives up that cost for the, for the November general. So, for the 17.2 million, I do want to draw a comparison to the 2018 general election, and that election cost Maricopa County $15.3 million. So, we do have an increase of just under $2 million, and most of that is driven by these next two slides I want to discuss. The first is our communications. So, we're going to be adding, as Mr. Fontes described, asking for a budget to be able to inform voters on our new ballot style, where they can vote on Election Day, how they can register to be sure that they can participate in this election. We've developed a brand-new mascot, Phil our mascot. But we are looking to request $200,000 of that, of those funds in this upcoming year. So, because the August primary moved up from the last week of August to the first Tuesday of August, so we will need to make those, start that advertising campaign in June this year, so it is requiring us to request those $200,000 early.
And, Mr. Chair, I just want to comment on that again. The communications that we've seen so far, I just want to congratulate everyone on both sides of the Elections House for the collaborative efforts that I've seen. I think, I think it's been great, kind of exactly certainly what I had in mind, and I just encourage everyone to continue to do that, and that's, that's very important. So, thanks, Scott, to you, Ray, Adrian, everyone on that effort.
And the last major driver is the $1.8 million just related to minimum wage increases. So, we have probably 5,000 temporary workers that we'll be staffing during our election. This comes to just over $800,000 per election just related to the $1 minimum wage increase. So, that is the major primary factor that's driving up why we have an increased election cost over the 2018 general election.
Supervisor Chukri.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would echo Mr. Gates's comments too. And one thing I saw when we, the Phil the Ballot, which I think is very clever, but I want to be sure too that because of this, this evolution that we've had within our County Elections Department, that we also, it doesn't, it's not misperceived as being too elementary. Does that make sense? That, that we're really talking to adults because adults are the ones that can vote, and just some of the early iterations seemed almost a little more speaking to, I see the Recorder nodding his head. And so, I don't want this to come across as a criticism, but I want to make sure that we all are taking elections very seriously. Phil the Ballot's very clever. I like it. I love it. But I want to make sure that we all still remember we're trying to drive out votes of adults and that it doesn't get too, too elementary. I don't know how else to say it.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Chukri, absolutely. We're taking this, these elections very seriously. And part of that is to drive them to a dashboard, that customized dashboard to be ballot-ready so that those voters can get that information at their fingertips, are they registered? This is especially challenging for the upcoming presidential preference election because we will have independents participate, who have voted in primary elections in the past. They assume that they are registered Democrat voters, and if they take our advice, take Phil the Ballot's advice to be ready, and they go visit that website, they can look on and identify, are they absolutely actually registered for this upcoming election? They can see what's on their ballot. And most importantly, we do want to combat that disinformation, make sure that they are aware that we are changing from ovals to, are from arrows to ovals. And Phil the Ballot just made sense too. That just resonates with people. It's easy to remember. You see his picture, and, and you see the ovals, and it's just...
And, and Mr., and Ms.?
Supervisor Garrett.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I was, I was going to say nothing, but since Mr. Chukri brought it up, I, I think the whole marketing side is just critical. It really is. I mean, particularly going into the presidential preference election, you and I were both at Australia Community College not too long ago, last week or so. You had a room full of 60 people, very politically savvy folks, and they had a lot of questions. So, I think how we roll this out and explain it to folks is very critical, that, and yeah, we don't want to be too cutesy. We want to take this serious. But I think it's so critical, and I'm pleased to see what's been rolled out so far. I love the tagline, being ballot-ready, and how do we grow from that? How do we explain that? But I would have to agree that we need to really be focused in, how do we, how do we truly market this to, to, you know, all segments of our community, you know, Hispanic community, Latino community, as well as, as our Native American community as well? So, just... So just stay focused on the marketing stuff, and, you know, I'm there with you on that. I think it's just so critical. You look at the slides that Mr. Fontes had, where we saw the big jump over the last five years in terms of new registration, you have folks that perhaps have never voted before, they haven't had the opportunity to participate, or they're going to participate for the first time. You're going to, you know, just with the excitement, you know, you have candidates, at least on my side of the aisle, I don't even know how many candidates we have, like 18 or so, I have no idea. I lose track, but there's a lot of excitement out there, on both sides of the aisle. And as we saw four years ago, you had folks come out of the woodwork that never participated, and they showed up wanting to vote, and I think that was part of the problem we had four years ago. So as we move forward in terms of the marketing, the education, we really have to thrive in and make sure we're doing a stellar job. I think you guys are doing a great job now, but we want to make sure we continue that.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Sellers.
Yeah, and I just want to add my thanks to the entire group. I think that with the changes and improvements we've made in our processes, that it's really important that we do a great job of communicating that, and you're doing that. And the thing that's most impressive to me is that it's such a collaborative effort, that it's obvious that this is a team working together to make these changes. So thank you.
Mr. Chair, just one more thing, just to go back to this election day command center, because it's a decent number, it's 250,000. Now, can you help us on this? Is this just going to get everybody some nice, you know, big-screen TVs in there? Or is this going to have a real impact? Is it going to allow the Elections Department to respond quicker to issues out there and, you know, in the community, that we know come up? Even with the perfect election, there's still issues out there. So what exactly is this going to do for us?
So, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gates, some of this will be soundproofing itself. So we do have a big room in the Elections Department where we could have housed all four command centers. However, it would be too noisy. Our call takers cannot hear the poll workers when they're calling, or the hotline staff. We also use radios to communicate for that. So some of that cost is going to go to soundproofing. Yes, some of it will go to technology, and adding those screens, so we can view what's happening in the polling location and respond more appropriately. So that's what's driving these costs, the soundproofing, the technology, it's driving the cubicle furniture that we'll be adding into this room. And we're working with FMD, we'll be setting up meetings in the next few weeks to get quotes that will further refine this amount.
And then, Mr. Chair, this is a one-time expense, then?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gates, that's correct, one-time expense.
And how many people can they fit? How many people can fit in this room?
So, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Chukri, we'll be looking to house approximately 20 to 30 call takers and demand this, the command center.
Just trying to get the bridge of the Starship Enterprise out of my head right now.
But, 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 with all fairness, I think, I think, I like the idea of having a central location, because it's critical. I mean, you have so many moving parts out there, and we have, what, I don't know how many million of people or so that are going to have an opportunity to go out there and vote, and I think the key to this election, and then as we've always stated, there's no perfect election, we're going to have problems. The question is, are we prepared to address those problems? And are we ready? And so I like the idea of having a central location where everyone's together, everyone's kind of working together to ensure that when problems do arise, we're there to take them on and address them.
And, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gates, I do want to go back to your question about the televisions. We do have three different systems that we'll be deploying on election day. One is the dashboard system that I discussed, where we're monitoring the site books. The other is election reporting system, so that's taking calls from the community, from the community, from our poll workers, from our troubleshooters, where we're logging all those issues. And then we are implementing a brand-new application that our poll workers will have, our line management clerk, that they can report that wait time back to us. So we will need those three different screens that we can have up projected, that we can monitor those three different systems at one point in time.
Great. Any other questions? CNN, hey, thank you, Scott, and Adrian, and Ray, for being here, the budget authorities.
Mr. Chairman, just real quickly, I know, I know, I know at the end of the day, we do bill the state for a portion of the cost of this election, do we not?
So, for the presidential preference election, yes.
But not for the primary and general? Don't they?
They pay for the sample ballot.
That is it? And what's that cost? Do we know? I honestly thought they paid more than just that for the primary and general.
So for the general election, the sample ballot cost is $336,000. For the primary cost, the sample ballot is $316,000. So total of just under $700,000 that we get reimbursed for from the state.
Anyway, thank you guys for coming in and being here. I don't know if you heard this, but we're having it today here, because we had some AV and problems up on the 10th floor, so.
Because the big screens are here.
Mr. Chair, I heard you did it.
You can use this room, you can use this room if you want.
I heard you did it here, just because my office is right across the plaza.
That's exactly it.
Anyway, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
You mean my passing of the gavel ceremony is just right here that you missed?
I was acting on man.
So, yeah, thank you guys, appreciate it. All right. This is a little bit different here, so we are now going to hear from our Clerk of the Board, Fran McCarron. Thank you, Joy and Fran, for hearing my call, because...
I'll take notes, Fran.
The electeds and their departments certainly have to come and present to the board, but your jobs and the people that work under your respective leadership are extremely important to this board as well. And you do have a part of our budget, because you provide fantastic service. So I thought it would be very appropriate this year to bring both of you up to represent your agencies. And I guess it's called the singing-for-your-supper days right now. So Fran, I am going to be so gentle on you, because you're the one who makes us look smart up here all the time, so you can do whatever you'd like.
Why, thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I had not yet put this into a song, so you'll have to do simply with slides.
Right.
And to Supervisor Guyardo, you're going to find out just how much fun it is to take notes when people talk fast, so we'll see what we can do.
I'll make it up as I go along.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the reason that I am here is because this year, although for the past 10 years, the Clerk has brought the budget in under budget, we do have a request this year. So there are two goals regarding our budget presentation that I'm, why I am asking for something over baseline, and that is partly for succession planning. Succession planning, we often think of as just for the director, but sometimes you need succession planning for depth of field in various functions that your office covers, and that is part of the reason for this. The second reason is to just simply keep up with the workload. You do keep us very busy. I'm not going to go through all the things on this slide, it's simply a representation and a list of a number of things that we do. So many times, people think we do meeting management, to set up your meetings, and agenda management, but we have another, a number of other functions that the Clerk's Office does. I'm not going to talk about all of these, I will be highlighting three of them as we go along. So we do all those things, but not all things are all the time. Agenda's management is one of the things that is all the time, but we're very thankful that this entire list does not fall on our shoulders at all times. Some things are very constant and steady, and the tortoise always wins in the end. So agenda management is one of those. Electronic document management takes care of all of our scanning, of everything that happens at board meetings, and all of the documents that come afterwards. We get service of process every day. Mr. Chairman, you had asked me about that once, and it is rare that there is a day that we do not have at least some in that folder. Service of process happens every day, and we process them all, and they are transmitted to the legal department and to risk management the very next morning, because all of those things have very timely processing schedules. Administration covers a number of things, but the thing most important to all of our employees and all of your employees is payroll, making sure we get that done. Licenses and permits include a lot of liquor licenses, as we had on this morning's agenda, quite a list, fireworks, et cetera, and boards and commissions. We have about 30 boards and commissions, and I know that you are always excited to get the vacancy list from us, to see all of the things that you have to do for appointments. Some of the things are steady, some of the things are occasional or cyclical, like financial disclosure statements, gentle reminder. Nomination and election certificates, that is coming up this year, of course, with an election coming up. And so the Clerk's Office does the nomination certificates at the primary, the election certificates at election time. And whenever a jurisdiction cancels an election, this happens mainly with our school districts, we do the election certificates for those that are canceled. Also, another thing that you're very familiar with is facilitating elected official appointments, which has happened a few times this year. We've had a couple justices of the peace, county attorney, and working on the assessor. So some things are steady, some things are cyclical, and some things have seen the greatest increase. This particular year, I want to talk about public records requests, special taxing districts, and legal class verification. Sometimes changes happen to our processes because of legislative bills, things that happen in the legislature, and we find out suddenly it says, this shall be filed at the Clerk of the Board's Office. So we have to set up something to monitor that. But other things have increased in numbers or breadth of service, and for the sake of this presentation, I'm simply going to highlight these three. Records requests. It's quite easy to see the increase from 2018 to 2019. Last year, we did 4,586 records requests. Under Joy's management, they put in a, across-the-board, public records request system in all of the, at the county website. So we have had tracking prior to that. This has kind of increased our ability to track, but we get public records requests from, obviously, the public, from departments within the county, and we do a fair amount of records requests and fulfilling those for our legal system as they are working on cases, especially when they need historical data from the Board of Supervisors' records. Special taxing districts...
What do you think? That is a massive increase over one-year timeframe. Was there a certain subject matter, other than, as Steve said, Bill's poor management? But outside of, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, he said leadership. So, no, but was there something that necessarily drove that high of a, I know we were in the paper a lot, is that...
We were in the paper a lot, and sometimes there is just a rash of them that come in at one time, but I'm sorry, I did not go back and categorize all of them.
Okay, you don't have to categorize. I just wondered if it's, if something hits the paper, then it has other citizens wanting to see also, which is, they're fine to do it, I just wondered.
We do often see that, but I do have to tell you that the Civil Division really relies on us a lot for records requests, and some of the things they do has to go back to service of process, because they are often able to get a case dismissed if service of process was not done properly. So they will have us check, we will go through those records. I often sign affidavits about service of process that either was done properly or was not done at all. So those kinds of things also fluctuate up and down. The other thing that the legal, Civil Division has implemented in a greater degree this year is the legal hold process. So although it's not necessarily tied to public records requests, it is where we have to segregate records and keep them in a legal hold, similar to that process. Special taxing districts, this does not have this massive increase. It went, you can see it's quite flat for several years. Last year, we did 11 new districts. To facilitate a citizens group to create a new special taxing district takes approximately a year, from inquiries to impact statements, to working through, helping them understand how to circulate petitions, the petitions, the verification, and then coming to the Board of Supervisors, which in almost every case requires at least two public hearings. This is where the depth of field in my office is extremely important. Currently, Lori Maderas in my office is sort of a singular working person who takes all of the calls about special districts, in addition to doing minutes on the side. But Lori, in order to facilitate all these new special districts, Lori has created a special taxing district resource manual. You can see, well, you can't really see it, but the link there, and this is a manual that covers the process, what the new board members have to do, they have to get a bond, open meeting law material, how to turn in their annual report, their budget, if they, and they're in election cycle, and it varies for the various types of district. But this manual has become so valuable that several of the other county clerks have told me that they are now using it, because it is an online resource for them. And in addition to that, next slide, this is a very new addition to special districts. And if you look at that slide, it is so confusing, you're going to go, oh my gosh, why did she even do this? But this is an interactive map, where you can put in your address, and then it can show you special districts in any given area. This little clip that we did is Daisy Mountain Fire District. And over at the side, if you were to live in one of those areas, it also shows you the other special districts that cover that particular area. In this case, of course, it's our flood control library in Maricopa County. But by putting in your address, you can find where you are there on that map, and it shows you what special districts may be in your area. And the third thing I wanted to highlight is the legal class verification process. In one way, this chart is accurate, except for the fact that the law came in in 2013. So you can see, it looks flat for three years. It's only because we were not, at that point, keeping stats on how many appeals we processed. We were peddling as fast as we could, simply to get them done. This is an interactive responsibility between the Clerk's Office and the Assessor's Office. There are three cycles in any given year, two cycles where people receive a notice and if, about responding, is this truly your primary residence? If they do not respond, the assessor sends a letter and usually changes it from one classification to another. At that point, there is a one-month period for appeals. All of the appeals come to the Clerk's Office. And so the first couple of years that this came into being, we had to put in place a number of computer programs whereby we could track everything that was happening. It usually starts with the call center, takes the first call, and then between the Clerk's Office and Assessor's Office, we have databases that track all of the changes that we're getting. So that happens through two cycles, and then, of course, all of them go on the Board of Supervisors' agenda for approval. The third cycle is a penalty cycle, and it comes through the Treasurer's Office, and it comes out as a civil penalty on your taxes. There is also a one-month appeal period for that. If you think the call volume is big on classification, you can about double it for the tax penalty, the civil penalty cycle. So when, we always know when that one month hits, because the very next day after the letters go out, a minimum of five phones, five people in my office are working on LCVs. There are days, especially at the beginning, where every one of us, there's 12 of us in the office, we are all... beginning, where every one of us, there's 12 of us in the office, we are all answering LCV questions. So, this has been a very large impact to our office. Now, one thing I want to say is that over the past couple of years, the board has given the assessor's office a funding for this. And how we have incorporated that with them is we have to send out letters to all of these people answering whether their appeal was approved or denied. And we use the assessor's funding stream for all of the mailings that we do. So, we take on the labor side of it, but for the mailing side of it, we use the assessors, which was part of the funding that you allocated to them. So, that comes to this, which is the final slide, which is our budget request to have one new position in the office. It would be an assistant deputy clerk. It's more than just people to fill the vacancies. It's the depth of staff that we need. And so, I would like to split the administrative oversight management between my very capable deputy clerk, who is Deb Schaefer here, and promote another person in the office to be the assistant deputy clerk, which would then allow us to have another management analyst within the office, especially as a backup cross-training to Lori Maderas. We have a number of cross-training programs that are going on right now, but it's making sure that we have a depth of field under all of those services that we provide. Questions?
Questions from the board. We're not, we're not going to ask you any questions.
Because I might have the answer.
Mr. Chair, great presentation, Fran, and a good reminder and maybe even new information for some of us on all the things that you do in the clerk's office. But you know, in particular, the special taxing districts and with the work that you and Lori do on this, so important. You know, these are people, again, maybe this is their first interaction with the county government. We've heard some frustration, but then, as time has gone on, hearing a lot less of that and a lot more thank you and appreciation for what the clerk's office is doing. So, thanks for that, and definitely want to pass on that thanks to Lori as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I told Bill to say that, Fran. I just want you to know.
And just for the record, all the new taxing districts are in both District 2 and 3.
Yeah, it certainly seems like it.
It ain't on this side.
Investing in infrastructure. Steve still has a lot to learn, Madam Clerk. I agree, and I think your staff is very talented. One question or one recommendation, it's not even a question, Mr. Chairman, would be, when it comes to office furniture and computer and phone equipment, I would imagine we would have those resources. And I'm looking at Mr. Reed Spalding with excess furniture. And I'm not saying it's, you know, 10 generations old, but I would think that wouldn't need to be. I would, I would think we'd have those resources. And in the money for the clerks, or, excuse me, for the assistant deputy clerk would probably make the most sense to me, given especially what I saw at the new county attorney's office, where we might have some excess furniture. Just, just a recommendation is all.
Yes. And I would be more than happy to do that. I only loaded a little over $4,000 in there for the office furniture. I did check with OET, how much a computer costs, all the hookups and the phone hookups. So, other than that, that's about $4,000 play one way or the other regarding the furniture.
Well, you know where that big conference table is now, going there, Reed?
We'll just chop it up into small pieces, and that'll be fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, for the last presentation of the day, our county manager, Joy Rich, representing a myriad of departments. So, thank you, Joy. Thank you for participating in this budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This presentation will be on behalf of the 34 departments that report up through me. And after careful consideration, we have seven baseline, above baseline requests for your consideration. These are the requests that affect both the general and the detention fund. If you previously appropriated one-time costs and they're being carried over, they're not presented here. And the special revenue funds are also not represented here. So, we're talking about the general and the detention funds. The two departments, I guess I'm going to have to do this, aren't I?
You need somebody to sit by you.
Success. I'm not sure what button I hit that did that. So, I might have to be re-schooled here in a minute. But of the two departments that report to me directly, we have requests from both the Human Resources Department and our OET Department. Human Resources is engaged in a very important effort to essentially modernize all of their payroll, training, onboarding, performance management into an HRIS system. We obviously are a beast of an organization. We have 20,000 users of our Human Resources Information System, a payroll of over $800 million, and we are past time to modernize. We talk a lot about how we're developing our employees, our employment experience. We want people to come to work here, and we don't want them to encounter an ETSL when they're being on-boarded, or when they're being trained, or when they're making their performance management decisions. So, this is a very important effort. Unfortunately, it's coming to our attention, and it's a very expensive effort as well. Last year, you gave us about $6.7 million for this effort. The solicitation has gone out for this. We're receiving proposals, and it looks like, frankly, it's going to be much closer to $13 million. And with Ed Winfield's advice, he's advising that we add another $2 million onto that for things that he and his experience have seen, has seen as unaccounted for consequences or costs associated with an implementation like this. So, we're asking for an increase of almost $8.3 million or for $15 million for that HRIS project. And you'll be hearing more about that as we move forward. Ed's looked over things. He feels like Human Resources is on the right track. In the next 90 to 120 days, we'll probably be able to nail it down costs a lot more. But for the purposes of this exercise, we'd like you to keep the number $15 million in mind for that project. We, the NeoGov contract, that's one of the systems that'll be replaced by this, is expiring in June 2021. We thought we would need $100,000 to continue that. Jan has told me she thinks she can find that money in her budget. So, please disregard the $100,000 that you see on that slide there. In terms of OET, we're asking for $2.7 million this year, and that's the anticipated increase for the Microsoft Enterprise Licensing Agreement. That, again, is a big increase in cost. The last contract was for three years, and it totaled over $13 million. The cost for it in 2020 was just under $5.2 million. So, this actually represents about a 50% increase in that licensing fee. We're going to continue to drill down on that and make sure that's necessary. Ed cautioned me earlier this month that he thought that cost could go as high as $4 million. We're not going to ask, if that's the case, we're going to come back and talk to you some more because that would be a 75% increase over what we're spending in 2020. And so, we really feel that we need to negotiate further, figure out why those costs are happening, if others are seeing similar costs. But for your purposes here, I think Ed would like to request the $2.7 million for that project. He'd also like an additional $600,000. You remember, we had the Digital County effort. It was part of Chairman Gates's initiative to really create a digital interface for a lot of our services, things like DocuSign, OnBase, SharePoint. And they did a really good job at that, so good that they have 25 additional requests from departments. And so, they'd like to continue that effort and request $600,000 to do that. And then finally, facilities management is upgrading their Maximo maintenance system. This is really kind of their parts inventory, work orders. It's how they track essentially all of the maintenance and the costs associated with it. And the, it's been a system that's served them well for many, many years, but it's time for an upgrade. And so, as a general fund department, Ed has included that in his budget for $145,000. So, let's see if, oh, I did it. Okay. So, the next request is from the two departments that report up through Reed Spalding. The first is Environmental Services. They have frankly seen a 202% increase in West Nile virus positive cases in calendar year 2019. We thought maybe when we started in the West Nile virus business that we'd see these cases wax and wane. That has not been the case here in Maricopa County. It's probably the reason the CDC spends so much time here studying. I believe we only, we also have a strain of mosquito or virus named after us. So, Darcy believes that it's time to expand the efforts and hire three additional FTEs. And the salary and benefits for those are about $174,000. Increase in fuel is $43,400, vehicle maintenance of $12,300, and the chemicals needed, the larvicide and the adulticide of $228,000. So, it's a little over $450,000. And then, she's also requesting $164,000 in non-recurring costs related to vector control for three additional fleet vehicles to support that effort, as well as replacing two of the PCR machines. And those are the ones that kind of run the mosquitoes that are, that are received from the traps and determine whether they're positive, and then they initiate the protocols based on those machines. So, those are the requests from Environmental Services. And I know this is not your favorite topic, but we also have a fairly significant request from Animal Care and Control. And we have heard the chairman's direction that we are to focus on sticking to our mandates, that we are to reduce our, you know, to benchmark ourselves with other jurisdictions, find out what best practices are. And we are committed to doing that. However, the current circumstance leaves us to request an additional $1.8 million over the $1.4 million that you provided last year in general fund monies for a total of $3.27 million in general fund contribution to the Animal Care Control Department. There are several reasons for this increase. One is that there has been a 7% reduction in licensing fees, and I'll talk a little bit more about all of this. We have an increase in risk allocation. We want to expand a pet help program and replace five vehicles. But we have heard you, and I'll talk a little bit more about how, what we intend to do about some of this.
Supervisor Chukri had a question.
Do you know how old those vehicles are that we'd be replacing? I mean, are they in pretty bad shape, I would presume?
Mr. Chairman, what, I don't, off the, off the top of my head, but I do know that they meet our criteria, our county criteria for replacement.
And how, do you know how many that would?
I believe it's...
There's how many, and then what the average cost is? Because I would imagine they have a lot of apparatus, and they're not very inexpensive.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know off the top of my head. I don't know if Reed knows either. We, we can get you that information, but yes, they are not, you know, Chevy Cavaliers or anything like that. They're...
Really disappointed that Reed doesn't know that.
I know. Me too. And he usually does, so.
Thank you.
The first... Would you like to join her at the desk and get on TV with us? Okay.
The first item that I think is significant is the expansion of the pet help program. I think many of you know about this program. Starla with Animal Care and Control has done a tremendous job. What this program does is it goes into underserved neighborhoods, frankly, neighborhoods where families have a group of dogs that are unaltered. Those dogs have puppies. Those puppies are given to neighbors and relatives in the area that then go forth and have puppies again. These folks don't have any money to have these animals altered. They're often unvaccinated. And what this program does and has done very successfully is go into these neighborhoods, build trust in these communities. They show up every week and provide these services. And Starla just frankly goes door to door, talking people into trusting her personally with these animals, that, that it's not a lack of love for these animals and having them altered. And the benefits are tremendous. So, if they do 30, 35 pets per clinic per week, that's 800 animals that they're altered, able to alter during a year. And we'd like to double that and set up another pet help clinic because, you know, this is just stopping the problem before it occurs for us. And it's tremendous. You know, Reed and I get weekly updates about the program, and it's heartwarming. And I really have to commend the personnel that have been involved in this. They do a tremendous job.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I would just chime in and just compliment Animal Care and Control on that particular effort, I can tell you, when I first got in this office, one of the first things we did with partner, partner up with Animal Care and Control, we did these health and wellness fairs. And we did one in Maryvale. We did one in town of Guadalupe and South Phoenix. And many of our families in my district, you know, we all love our animals. And unfortunately, you have families that just, just aren't able to do it, or for whatever reason. But to be able to go in there and build that, that relationship and that trust and, 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 and talk to these families, we had a homeless gentleman out in Maryvale, and his first response when we approached him was, he thought we were there to take his dog away from him. And he literally almost ran until we were able to work with him and talk to him and, and sure enough, be able to service his dog, make sure that he was taking, the pet was taken care of, the surgeries were done. And it's that type of stuff that we do. And I can tell you, and you may find this cynical, but it's actually a complaint I get, is that, at least like in the town of Guadalupe and even South Phoenix, is that the biggest complaint is they, some of the communities feel that the dogs are being imported into their neighborhood. Like, these aren't our dogs. And, and, and that's, you know, I don't know if there's any truth to that. But nonetheless, we go in there and service that, those areas to make sure the dogs are...